Meeting to order, please. Let's kick it off with roll call. Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Ms. Donahue?
Here.
Mr. Woodson?
I'm here.
Mr. Parrish?
Yeah.
And Christine Smith?
I am here also.
If everyone would rise, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please, and I ask that in your moment of silence today, you please remember Phil Erwin. He is so acutely missed today. Phil attended more meetings than arguably anybody in the history of Rappahannock County, virtually every meeting of the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Zoning Appeals since the late 1960s. It is hard to think of an aspect of life in Rappahannock County which Phil did not enjoy participating in and did not have a profound effect on, including county government, politics, the environment, agriculture, tourism, and the list goes on and on. Please pray for him and his family and friends. It takes us to the first item on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda. We do have a few addendum items on the agenda today, which include, under Presentations, the RRCS Marcus Alert Presentation and Request for Support, which Mr. McGrath has joined us for, and also the addendum item under I New Business, the Proclamation for Phil Erwin Day. Do I have a motion in regards to the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, I just had one question. Under, pardon me, under Closed Meeting, Item L, there's an item here regarding performance review of the county attorney. My recollection is we already conducted that.
That's correct. It's just for a group discussion with the county attorney present by the board.
Was he not available when we met last time?
My recollection is that he was quite sick, and so I put it off for quite a while. And I think after our last round of evaluations, it was a consensus from several members of the board that we participate in some things as more of a group, and so I put it on the agenda today.
So it's really just so that he's present, so we can just complete that discussion?
That's correct, and wrap up that business for the year.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could make a comment or request?
Yes, sir.
Tonight, under, oh, public comment, if we could maybe perhaps move public comment earlier, because we'll be considering both the broadband authority, which we may take public comment during that part, but public hearing, we have so many things there that I think the public may want to comment on. We just move it up.
Sir, the broadband authority and the bonus discussion are both public hearings in their own right?
Right, but then you have to comprehensive plan after, I just thought maybe if the public wanted to have a comment period before.
My goal in putting, I guess, having it the order the board did during, for your policy, was that citizens who may be interested in commenting on anything won't get confused and do that during your public hearings. You get those public hearings out of the way, and then you can move on to just a general public comment.
I understand. Just, I just thought it might be better. It's not a hill to die on.
All questions are answered in regards to the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Woodson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that takes us on to Item C, the school report with Superintendent Grimsley. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Greetings from your RCPS family. Before I start, though, I'm reminded today, missing Phil, who is really adamant that we have our pocket constitutions at the schools. And part of what, when I spoke to him last, he really wanted to ensure that our civics classes in government always had them to give out to our classes. So the schools are very interested in continuing that tradition in his name, so if anybody is interested in helping with that, we're very interested to keep that going. He wanted every Rappahannock graduate to have one of those pocket constitutions by the time they graduate. So we really appreciate his contributions to our civics education. And our civics education at our schools, as you may or may not know, does really, really well. Our students score over the 90th percentile very consistently on state standardized tests in government and civics, so we thank him for his advocacy and contributions. Well, the end of the first semester is drawing to a close. Students are working hard to finalize grades, take exams, and they're completing SOL fall testing, starting today, for the next couple of weeks. And I will say that right before I left, I did get a call from the high school, and the preliminary scores are looking really, really good, despite everything. So I'm very proud of the staff for what they've been doing. Although it is a stressful time, staff are working extra hard to ensure students do not miss out on some normal festivities that occur at school each holiday season. Although these celebrations look differently, they are having a positive effect on student staff morale. Examples include the RCES, 12 Days of Giving Celebration occurring right now, where students are encouraged to offer expressions of kindness, such as a nice note for someone, a card for a teacher, reading a book to someone, and thanking a custodian, to name a few. Although the high school eagerly anticipated Pride Variety Show is not able to occur this year, I'm so sad, it has been redesigned on a virtual platform with which our students are very familiar, TikTok. The TikTok Talent Show is underway, in which students, faculty, and staff can submit short 30-second TikTok clips to earn an entry in a drawing for some great prizes. This year, the contest has been opened up to students of all ages. However, a parent's guide for understanding the risks in parental controls has also been released, and any student under the age of 13 must submit parental permission to participate. As faculty and staff have been working harder than ever before, the Teacher Advisory Committee and Commit to Be Fit have been finding ways to support the well-being of our staff. Last month, every staff member received a turkey for Thanksgiving, along with a voucher to participate in a pop-up farmer's market for some Thanksgiving Day fixings. The event was very well-received, and we thank Thornton River, Roger Jenkins, Jackalope Bridge, Sunnyside, and the Wholehearted Health Foods for participating in this event. Many of our student groups are showing their holiday and panther spirit by participating and giving back to the community. Examples include the FFA running a doggy drive for RAL. They are collecting items such as dog toys, tennis balls, collars, dog beds, and leashes. Collection sites are set up at both schools. The elementary SCA is running a warm clothes drive through December 18. Gently-used items are fine. In particular, they're looking for hats, coats, mittens, gloves, and scarves of all sizes. There is a collection bin for these items located at the elementary school lobby. Tryouts for our winter sports season begin today and run throughout the week. It is still not exactly certain what the competition schedule will look like, with different districts managing some delays and postponements. We'll get more information out on this as we work through the details. The RCHS auditorium is complete, is completed last week. I did include some pictures in my report this month. Thank you so much for all your support in helping this project come to fruition. Here they are, yay! The high school is already using it in order to spread out larger groups of students for testing and instruction. It is now available for county meetings as well. Tomorrow night at 6:30, the school board will be meeting in the RCES auditorium. Of interest will be the determination of whether we are able to begin transitioning our most instructionally vulnerable students to four-day instruction beginning in January. We will be looking at our school metrics data and local data to best make this decision. With COVID cases rising in our community and region, as well as with our most recent positive staff member after Thanksgiving break, we will be very closely monitoring the situation and very close consult with BDH. As you can imagine, this is an extremely difficult time to work in education. With the polarization of school reopening philosophies, constantly changing guidance, and the added stress of the recent surge in COVID cases, your RCPS staff is understandably stressed, exhausted, and anxious. I could not be more proud of the staff at RCPS for all their work and determination to make this year a success despite all of these challenges that came with reopening in a pandemic. This is no small feat, and their efforts truly do need to be acknowledged and appreciated. While I completely understand and appreciate the county's conservative approach to budgeting during this time, I also urge you to please consider releasing the frozen contingency dollars in order to provide a much-needed and well-deserved bonus and 2% raise in accordance with the school board plan for staff compensation. These funds are already budgeted, so this is not a request for new funds. Also, RCPS is returning approximately $345,000 from FY '20, so as a result of our close collaboration and appropriate management of CARES Act funds. So the risk of a budget shortfall to the county coffers has been greatly diminished. Please consider releasing these dollars now in order to provide very much-needed economic relief to a staff that has been working incredibly hard at such a breakneck pace to deliver quality instructional services, social emotional support, and nutritional services to the families of Rappahannock. Further, your school system has been integral in providing grant funding and space to provide other forms of support for families needing alternative options for childcare. We know we will never be able to pay school staff what they are worth, but we can take important action today to demonstrate we acknowledge what they've earned and what they deserve. As always, thank you for your ongoing support of your schools, especially in these challenging times. We can do what we do without your support and advocacy, so thank you so much. We do appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me?
Dr. Grimsley, I think I read in the Rappahannock News that you've stepped up your COVID-19 protocol.
Yes, sir.
Just describe what that sort of more stringent approach is.
Sure. Absolutely. So with the COVID metrics showing a higher risk in the surge in cases in our local community, what that means is on the flow chart for our screenings of symptomatic students at school, instead of sending them home as we would with any typical illness, please monitor for symptoms 48 hours, can return without fever. Now we're putting on an automatic 10-day quarantine unless they present with a negative case within the 48 hours of the seventh day, which is after day five, in accordance with the new CDC guidelines. So that's basically what that means.
And then my other question, unrelated, is the $345,000 that you're returning, that happened largely in part because of the COVID-19 CARES Act money that we put into various PP and other initiatives in the schools. What's the time period from which that $345,000 is being captured and returned to the general fund?
It's from FY '20. Mr. Curry can speak to when that audit should have been closed, so that should be, there it is.
Okay, so it's strictly?
It's done.
It's strictly fiscal year 2020 money?
It's 20 money, yes.
Okay.
And I anticipate that we'll have more for '21 as we get those reimbursements back from COVID-related reimbursements. Yes, sir.
So we haven't got, we haven't, you really can't return anything until the fiscal year closes out this time?
Correct.
Well, technically, they returned everything at the end of the fiscal year, we just haven't recognized how much that was.
Okay.
Well, we have.
Any other questions? I think I have some questions, but I'd prefer to hold it to the later agenda items.
Sure.
And I imagine you'll be sticking around.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Excellent.
All right, the next item on the agenda, D1, is the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak may do so. Please raise your hand, and when I recognize you, please approach the microphone, identify yourself by name and the district in which you reside. And if you keep your comments to about three to five minutes, we should be all set. Ms. McCool?
You know everybody's name, Kristen. She's good.
Missy and I hung out for a year on the RCRFA.
Good for you.
Okay, so it's Missy McCool, and I'm a 17-year Hampton District resident. I'm also a board member on the County Park Authority, and I'm the Vice President of the PTO at Rappahannock County Public Schools, mother to a fifth grader and a seventh grader. And I'm also the daughter of two retired Virginia public school teachers, so I'm glad I got to speak out here. And I hope that I represent the kind of citizen of Rappahannock County who is wanting to attract and retain. My children have excelled under the guidance of the excellent teaching staff, the Rappahannock County Public School System. I've had nothing but positive experiences in my interactions with the educators and administrators. People should be moving to this county because of its excellent schools. This year, while very challenging, has been no exception. The teachers have risen to the occasion of distance learning and hybrid school sessions. The teachers and staff have gone to unbelievable efforts to educate our children and keep everyone as healthy and safe as possible. They are our county's most essential workers. I feel incredibly fortunate to be part of the school system. Rappahannock County currently pays less than the surrounding counties for teacher wages, while we have a higher cost of living and a shortage of affordable housing. We can and we should do better for our educators. The raise and the bonuses are long overdue. It should have been bigger, and it also should have been implemented yesterday. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. McCool.
Thank you, Missy.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ruth.
Do we have a FOIA concern here, Gary?
I'm sorry?
Do we have a FOIA concern with the park board?
There are three members.
Over in the audience, there's one on the board.
As Ms. McCool didn't really talk about park business, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen in public. The name is Ruth Welch, and I've owned property and castle in the Stonewall Jackson District for 16 years, and I've been a full-time Rappahannock resident for nearly six years. I'm speaking today to encourage you to support the RCRFA by voting for one of the qualified candidates who have applied for appointment to the board. Since 2004, I've been taking my grandchildren to the small park, to play on the playground, play tennis, and walk the Rush River. While the kids had fun, I couldn't help notice the trails were muddy, the tennis courts were asphalt and were poorly surfaced, the steps to the tennis courts were rotten with no handrail, and the old wooden handrail down to the river was and is still wobbly and full of splinters. I applied to join the RCRFA in hopes that it could help improve the park and make it a place for which the citizens of Rappahannock could be proud. I applied to you, and you accepted my application in March 2017, so thank you. In 2018, I completed Old Rag Master Naturals class, sponsored by the Virginia Department of Agriculture, and I became a certified master naturalist. I also took a course at the then-Rap U on controlling invasive plants. The instructor, Mike Wanger, took the class to the Rappahannock County Park to identify the many species of invasive plants and how these plants can take over and choke out a native forest. I was really embarrassed that the park was used as an example of poor environmental stewardship. Since I was on the RCRFA, I took steps to start making the park a place of environmental sustainability and beauty. I made a motion that the RCRFA would take steps to achieve that goal. In 2018, we had the state forester, then Kyle Dingus, write a forestry management plan where he identified 35 Virginia native species. His first suggestions were to stabilize the trails and remove the ash trees that were devastated by the Emerald Ash War. In June and July 2018, we received wood chips from Quality Tree Service, who continue to provide us with the free wood chips as we need them for the trail maintenance and the playgrounds. We hosted a trail maintenance workday where you spread the chips and even out the trails. The fell ash trees were cut up to make borders for the trails. In early 2018, RCRFA collaborated with Tony Van Acker of RLAP, Chris Parrish, and International Dark Sky Association to help certify the county park as a potential dark sky park by taking measurements of the darkness and offering quarterly dark sky events. Phil Erwin, who we honor today, thanked me personally to have that park was identified as a dark sky park, so he didn't have to use his homestead for that effort. In fall of 2018, I recruited Tony Van Acker of RLAP and Bonnie Beers, a certified master naturalist, to join the RCRFA. I picked these folks for their knowledge and work in the area of environmental sustainability. They applied and have been valuable members of the board with their knowledge and work ethics. Bonnie has been our lead of the monthly park workdays on Saturday mornings to clear out invasives, plant natives, Plata Bluebell Trail, and establish Bluebird Trail. In November 2018, RCRFA hosted the first invasive removal project, and with more than a dozen park members and volunteers, most over 60, we were barely able to clear a section of invasives about 20 foot long along the forest edge. And I think some of you were at that. I think you were staff, and I know some of the rest of you may have been there. It looked like a really daunting task, and we realized that at this rate, it would take us decades to get rid of the invasives. With the help of Rapfo, we also installed an octagonal native pongo garden where the merry-go-round stood. With the help of our county administrator, Gary Curry, Superintendent Glickman from the RSW Area Jail agreed to let us some of their well-behaved prisoners beginning in January 2019 to help with the park clearing. They came not only with muscles, but with gators, dump trucks, saws, and other equipments, including guards. Tony took the lead on supervising the work that they would complete one to three days a week during the winter and some in the summer. With their help, we've removed nearly every invasive islandthus tree, burning bush, English ivy, and some Bradford pear trees. In 2018, we applied for a grant where we were able to resurface the tennis court, add two benches, and cornhole shuffleboard court with two benches, install a mini frisbee golf, and add a display panel. We also applied for funding to install two handicap parking spaces, and in late 2019, the RCRFA and the BOS were able to secure the funding for that internally, so thank you for that also. We've also received some other small grants for Keep Virginia Beautiful and for the Pathless Volunteer Grant. In 2018, Ralph Bates suggested we apply for a PEC Krebser Grant for funding for the environmental sustainability efforts. With the help of PEC's Claire Catlett, we were able to hire a local landscape architect to design a park master plan for Future Vision that included a safer circular parking lot, an accessible restroom, quarter-mile hiking trail, river overlook, an amphitheater, and a welcome sign on the median of Route 211. This project was completed in 2019, and the RCRFA is slowly prioritizing these plans. In 2019-20, two Eagle Scouts installed a new stair and welded a new handrail to the tennis courts and installed new fencing around the basketball courts. These were Dominic Del Grosso and Ben Giles. In 2020, RCRFA joined with the Rappahannock Gardening Club and the Friends of the Rappahannock in Little Washington in Bloom, which morphed to Rappahannock in Bloom. With the Krebser Grant and this effort, we were able to beautify the front of the park with native dogwoods, redwood, sugar maples, and about 185 other native plants and shrubs. In July 2020, the county park was a location for summer in the Rappahannock Park that provided safe outdoor activities for our children, about 100 or so, with many other groups that became the Rap Kids Coalition. This fall, we have a feasibility study grant for the quarter-mile accessible walking trail and are planning on the accessible family restrooms with your help. But we've only just begun. There is so much to do. I urge you to appoint a well-qualified applicant to the RCRFA, of which it looks like both applicants are. I've been suggesting one be appointed now and next June, when five of the current members' terms expire, including mine, that the second applicant apply and perhaps be appointed, assuming that none of the current members choose to stay on the board. Let's continue to support the environment, as our friend Phil Erwin did for half a century. Thank you for your consideration and continued support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Roy Ellis from Scrabble District. I'm not even sure, I've lived in Scrabble for a number of years. I'm not even sure my concern is something that the board can deal with, but I thought the school report might address it. I've heard that the Athletic Association in the county is, they're only going to allow two parents per child, or two adults per child, to attend ballgames, and that the parents or the adults can't attend away games. I know I've participated in attending sports with my kids and grandkids for 40 years in this county, and that's a big deal for the children. I've got grandkids that's in the final years of their schooling. I just really think it's unfair to the children primarily. I get along with this. Mandates are all right as far as masking and distancing, but I just feel like it's hurting the kids. And they really, sports is a big part of their life in school, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Mr. April.
Gary Achiel, Hampton District. I'm here today on behalf of the schools, on behalf of Headwaters, to support our superintendent and our school board and our teachers and staff. As someone who has been regularly attending school board meetings, more frequently than I attend your meetings, I must say, I am impressed with the diligence and the professionalism and just this straight-out love and care for our kids that is every month. The reports, the struggles they have with budget, the struggles they have with decisions that in some ways are the most impactful in our county, the idea of, is it safe to have our children together for education? And you can't help but notice that we're, I don't know whether it's a good thing with hay bales and with school back in session, whether we like the attention we get here in Rappahannock or whether we don't, but if keeping kids out of school has been proven to be harmful to their long-term growth, both in terms of their intellect and their academic skills, but more importantly, their emotional lives, everything we can do to try and keep our kids in school seems to me to be a top priority right now. And obviously, you can't send your kids to school if you don't have programs and teachers who are prepared and willing to take the extra step. So you know where this is headed. We're in December, this last school board approved what I thought was a fiscally conservative but appropriate approach to recognizing and thanking our teachers, especially recognizing their over-and-above efforts. We can't help the fact that the national numbers look worse every day. We don't know whether we'll be all virtual come January, whether we'll be all back in school come March. Nobody knows. But we do know that we're not going to ask anything less of our teachers in the next six months until we get through the summer. I know you got a tough choice. I appreciate as a taxpayer your fiscal conservatism. I've talked to some of you personally about that before I cast a vote in these elections. So I do really appreciate your efforts, your service on behalf of the taxpayers of this county. But it seems to me that if the school board needs a decision today to make payroll in December to include a teacher's bonus, that if there's any way possible, that's a decision you guys want to make before your turn today or tonight. From what I know, Mr. Curry certainly knows the numbers better than I do, but from what we've heard already, the conservatism of the school board and the superintendent and their pragmatism when it comes to numbers is going to return a substantial amount of money to the county budget. You already approved the $185,000, but because of uncertainties about revenue, you prudently withheld full authorization of that until later in the year. Well, now we're later in the year. I would say release the whole $185,000. It seems to me, but it's not my job, it seems to me that that's not risky at this point. However, if worse comes to worse, and you still have serious concerns about revenue, you could release $100,000 of that today, which could cover the bonuses and get them in their paychecks before Christmas. And if you're able then to release the remainder of it in the period in February, or whenever you would reconsider that, I understand that there are adjustments can be made to reimburse payroll to recognize that later in the year. The decision that can't be postponed is whether or not the, these teachers go home for the Christmas break with their bonus. It would seem to me, if I were a teacher, given everything else that's going on, knowing that these conversations are in progress, that it might seem like a slap in the face for them to go home with nothing, no raise and no bonus. So that's my concern, and I know you're not unconcerned, and I know you have many, many things that you have to balance out. But I hope in considering it, this timeliness of this particular decision strikes me as worthy of special consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Achiel. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, Ms. Gressinger.
Hi, Sheila Gressinger, Hampton District. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge the ability that citizenry has to participate more fully in our government. And the reason I'm saying this is because a couple of years ago, we only had one Board of Supervisors meeting a month at 2:00, and people used to say, oh, yeah, I work, I can't, I can't get here. Then it's acknowledged that by having an evening session, which was really good. And now we actually have the audio that goes, so people can, if they can't go to 2, they can't go to 7, but then they can participate by actually watching the video. So we have all this broad spectrum of ways that the citizenry can be a breast of all the things that are going on in our community, which gives them no reason not to participate in a lot of things. And they've been told they can write letters, and there are other ways that they can communicate. So I applaud all the things that the Board of Supervisors and our county government are doing to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gressinger. Gary, that does remind me, is Zoom working today?
It is working right now. I had a little hiccup a few minutes ago, but we're back.
So for folks that do want to participate via Zoom, can you walk us through the instruction for public comment to do so, please?
Yes, if citizens participating through Zoom are interested in providing public comment, they should raise their hand, proverbial hand through the Zoom system, and I can unmute your microphone. Whenever you're ready to-
If I remember correctly, there's three dots in the upper right-hand corner, and there's a drop down below that, and you choose the raise hand option?
It depends on the platform that you're using, whether you're using a Mac or a phone or, but there are multiple ways to get to raise your hand, but the more, and then raise your hand is one.
Okay, so if you'd like to participate in the public comment, and you are joining us today via Zoom, please use the raise hand option, and we will be with you in a few moments. Is there anyone else in the courthouse today that wishes to speak? Please raise your hand, your actual hand. Yes, Steph Ritter.
Hi, I'm Steph Ritter, and I'm from Flint Hill. I have two issues. One is I strongly support bonuses for the county staff and particularly the teachers who really face an annus horribilis. And I don't know how they're doing it, but they are, and our kids are learning. And the second is to thank you for, I'm hoping I'm going to get the syntax of this right, approving a more minimal bridge for North Pose Road than was recommended by VDOT. And if there's any way that that, the trusses could be painted green, I think you would make a lot of people on North Pose Road happy. But thank you so much, and thank you, Debbie, for notifying us.
Thank you, Steph. Yes, Mr. Deakins.
Good afternoon, members of the board and the public. I'd like to read into the record today a letter that I sent to the supervisor of my district, and then I'd like to follow up with a couple little comments after that, if you'll indulge me. This was sent out this morning, and it covers five subjects, random, not random subjects, but diverse subjects, and I forgot to add the sixth subject, which I would like to talk about a little later. Good morning, Kier. By the way, I'm Beak Deakins, Hampton District. Good morning, Kier. Hope you and your family are well during these deeply troubled times. Here are a few items that I heard you to consider as you cast your vote. Please make sure that all citizens are given an opportunity to speak at both BOS sessions today. Do not abide by this dictatorial governor's unconstitutional edict of no more than 25 people can gather. Number two, honor the legacy of Phil Irwin, immortalize his status by installing a plaque on his favorite chair and declaring that it will be forever kept vacant. Number three, pass the proposed comprehensive plan. Phil Irwin's endorsement was enough to persuade me. It may not be a perfect document, but we need to move forward on this long overdue project. Number four, vote no on the proposed broadband authority if it involves any taxpayer contribution. I am not paying for another's internet connection. And number five, and with all due respect to Dr. Grimsley, this number five is the first time in 36 years I've ever said a thing about the school board, and I'll tell you why, about the school system. Provide an explanation why school buses are running their routes with empty buses and why there are massage chairs at the schools. After observing the empty buses on Rock Mills Road, I started to make inquiries about the school system. The information with confidential sources that I received was troubling, to say the least, more than that subject of the public comment session at 2:00 and 6:00, 7:00. Looking forward to your reply. I happened to be standing beside the, that was the end of the letter, I happened to be standing beside Rock Mills Road. One time I looked at it, I said, well, maybe it's my eyes. I saw an empty school bus running its route, typically right on time as it's always scheduled. And I thought about it. Then about a week or so later, I saw the same thing happen. I said, this is it. I'm trying to end a long career in the building industry, and I'm going to be on fixed income one of these days, and I'm going to watch my dollars. My first tax bill in this county, now granted there wasn't a house on it, was $18. I just paid a huge bill over at the treasurer's office, and I really would like to find and ask Dr. Grimsley and the school system these questions that have been relayed to me, or this information. I'd like to kind of confirm or deny it. And the numbers might be a little bit off, but I think we're at about a $14 million school budget, and that works out with some simple math of about $18,600 and some odd dollars per student, for 700 or 750 students. So the issues I'm concerned about are empty buses, of course, these massage chairs, I'd like to confirm or deny those. An issue that's bothered me before that I really never thought much about pursuing is the lighting at the ball field is on continuously. Nonetheless, we're a, we're supposed to be a dark skies community, and we've got light pollution there. I'd like to find out about that. I understand there's at least 50 students in the school system that are not residents. I understand that the grass is cut on ball fields a couple of times a week. I understand that there's a cheerleading coach that's been hired that we don't, I don't think we're playing any sports, but I don't know. And I hear that at the end of the school year, there's this massive push to spend the money, and there's a big binge on buying books. I also hear that there's three gyms that are not available for the public use. And I'd like to have those questions answered. And the item that I did not add was item number six, which is I'm opposed to bonuses. This is not the time, we're all suffering, this is not the time to provide bonuses. And if you're going to give up for fire and rescue and the sheriff, yeah, I'm all for it. But that's where I would draw the line. Now, last, the last I checked, we were still in the United States Constitution. And I urge the constitutional officers in this county to uphold the oath that they took and refuse to endorse these unconstitutional orders from the governor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deak. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, there's no one. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Glanny.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you regarding the comprehensive plan, some critical issues, and the schools. The comprehensive plan needs to be approved as is today. I don't understand why at this point in the process, a detailed editing is taking place when so many far more important board tasks are being ignored. Not that I disagree with any of the non-substantial, happy-to-glad, puppy-to-dog changes, but commas in numbers will hold up approval? Really? I also don't understand why the planning commission, three fellow board members, and the county staff need to be criticized after all their hard work. Please approve it as is for Phil. I would like to, I would like a status report on various critical issues that don't seem to be getting the board's attention and action. First is county fire and rescue is in a crisis requiring immediate action. The board needs to provide overarching guidelines for strategic planning. Paid staff has been needed to be addressed years ago. Response data to make informed decisions is not available. Filling the vacant ESC, Emergencies Services Coordinator position, months after the resignation and addressing the issues that caused the resignation. County infrastructure is crumbling. It is a liability and requires immediate action. Courthouse, this replacement, Rack Theater liability, the building and zoning office rental space, we went through a joint meeting months ago, and nothing has happened since. County Human Resource Management needs to get to commonly accepted standards to address potential liability issues. Pay equity and bonuses, which I'll talk about a little bit more in the following. Employee rules and regulations, such as convicted DWI offenders driving county vehicles. School funding is out of control. Massage chairs for stress relief versus what deputies confront in the fire and rescue volunteers? The source of money is immaterial. The message sent to employees is the issue. And now we hear about turkeys and other bonuses, and it's just, my wife was a teacher. I understand how stressful it is, but that stress is not the same as a deputy confronting a knife-wielding six-foot-five maniac at the quickie mart. Priorities are questionable. When there is a proposal to provide medical services, when, was it just a month ago, there was a report of a failure rate of 40%? It is well past the time for the board to have budget category, if not light item oversight of the school budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Glanny. Anyone else? No. This is, there's no applause during the public comment period. Anyone else wishing to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom with their hand raised, Mr. Curry?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, if you would introduce them and unmute their mic, please.
I've asked to unmute their mic. They have to do it themselves.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
And they are muted. It's Darren, Daniel Coffey, sorry.
Very good. Thank you, Daniel.
Can we?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Very well, thank you.
Yes, my name is Daniel Coffey. I'm a resident of Spadeville in Peamont District, represented by the chairman. It's a couple of things. I won't take much of your time today, but I want to let you know what my views and opinions are on a few different things. The first and foremost is I would like to see the board take action on the comprehensive plan and get that passed and move forward with. The second is the funding for the sheriff's office vehicles. As a former deputy for this county myself, personally, I know how important this is. I understand that they're down two vehicles already due to vehicles being totaled. And that's something, it's a fairly long process to get those vehicles in service. And I feel like that should be approved immediately so the sheriff can move forward in acquiring those vehicles and having safe vehicles for her deputies to do their job The other thing that I would like to ask the board to do is to draft a resolution to send a message to Richmond on their mass mandates, any potential forest lockdown again of our county residents or businesses. I remember when the, when all the COVID-19 started, my household was directly affected by mandatory shutdowns of businesses. You know, I think we're all adults. We still live in a free country, and we should be able to make informed decisions on the information that we have. And if we feel like we're under the blame, ask that by all means do it, but we shouldn't be forced to do it if we feel we're guilty. So would like to see something along that lines of, you know, sending the message, something a little more than just a message to Richmond on that. The last concern that I have is I know the box has already been opened for paid staff of Rappahannock, our rescue. I'm not going to argue that there's not a need for that. But I ask you all to proceed very carefully with the way that this is implemented in the county. No way around it, it's going to be very, very expensive. We already have a limited tax base, and a pretty big tax burden going on in the residents of the county. And once that ball is rolling, there's no way to stop it. So please take that into consideration, and I thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Is there anyone else with their hands raised? Mr. Curry?
Yes, Julie Bolt House.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Hey, this is Julie Bolt House. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Okay, thank you. I'm with Peamont Environmental Council. I just wanted to comment on one of your items that you have coming up, which includes the door number of a bridge replacement. We haven't had too much time to delve into this, we just saw it pop up on the agenda, but we're very concerned about bridges. We had it listed in our database as being eligible for the National Register. Upon closer look, it does look like it's not eligible. However, we feel like there is a structure where a new determination of eligibility really should be done because the determination is 25 years plus old. And according to our data, the date that is on the bridge from the 1935 is incorrect. We have information that it was 1909. We also have photo documentation from the structure showing that there is stamping on the structure from the Cambridge Building Company, or sorry, Bridge, the Timber Bridge Company, which went out of business in 1920. Well, actually, it was, it was bought up by another company in 1925. It did not build any structures as far as we can tell after 1919. So in other words, my point is that this bridge is definitely older than 1935, so the date that that determination is based on is correct. It also, that determination is not certain who built it, but the stamping on the bridge that shows that it possibly is Cambridge. So I just feel like if the history is storied, research can be found, the structure, the quality of placement, the plant, and I completely understand the bridge may not be safe any longer, it may need to be replaced, but we need to mitigate that impact, and we need to make sure that we document this structure for historic preservation of this information for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else with their hand raised on Zoom, Mr. Curry?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Pull the three sets of meeting minutes out of the consent agenda, please.
Pull the three sets of meeting minutes out of the consent agenda, please. Unfortunately, I was busy doing other editing and wasn't able to review them prior to this meeting.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on the minutes and other than that, we can.
I have a question just because I want to ask the board something about it, but the recollection of abstract votes, if we could just pull that off as a separate item.
Is everything else agreeable for the consent agenda, item two, three, four, and five? Do I have a motion for the approval of those items?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. All in favor? Oh, let's go ahead and read in our disclosure statements.
Thank you.
I'll start. Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 dash 3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, whose firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest. Mr. Parrish.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process which includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as an individual and member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 3115H, as a Board of Supervisors member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors, which is affected by the transaction, and I'm able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
Pursuant to the Code of Virginia, section 2.2 3115H, as a Board of Supervisor member, I might have a personal interest related to the approval of the accounts payable process that includes consideration of a payment to Walker Jones, which firm provides legal counsel related to the Bragg one case. The nature of my potential personal interest is the fact that the named firm is providing for my legal defense as a member of the Board of Supervisors. I certify that my involvement in action is as a group of three or more members of the Board of Supervisors that are affected by the transaction and that I am able to participate in the transaction fairly, objectively, and in the public interest.
And Mr. Fraser, you opt not to read that into the record, correct?
Right, Walker Jones never represented me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser. So for the approval of items two through five on the consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We're going to pass on the minutes for adoption until next month.
Do I need to move to table approval of the minutes or make any further?
No, I don't think any action is needed.
And then that takes us to the, the record of abstract votes, Mr. Fraser, that you had a concern about.
Yes, I, I know that the Electoral Board has been appointed by the court to be the duly tasked body that certifies the elections in the county, but since, since this board is the closest elected body to the public, I thought maybe it would be a good idea if we asked the board to come in and just give an overall view of, of how this historic transaction happened in the county. There's, you know, some rumors out there, but I, I'd like to just hear the Electoral Board just give us a, an overview of it. And since we may have to ask them to come in as a body, I thought it, it would be the best process if our board asked them, they could task one of their members to come, but if all of them come, it becomes a meeting of both bodies. So I, I haven't asked any of the members of the Electoral Board myself.
Do any of the other supervisors have any feelings about that?
That would be the January meeting, I guess.
So I fail to understand why we need to certify this anyway. We've never done this before.
Yeah, we do every year. But we, we did it last year.
Did we do it last year?
But it wasn't done historically, while the Code of Virginia suggests that you could. It's placed on the public record, basically. And, and all that's happening is you're, they're being appended to your minutes and or end up in the minute book.
We, we don't certify this, they do.
No. They certified it and so this seems to be superfluous that we would also need to certify.
You're not certifying.
What we, I wonder if what we should actually do is include it under reports then? That's what it really is. It's, it's not an action item.
Yeah. Yeah, I included in, in the consent agenda. It's similar to your minutes in that it will be recorded as part of your minutes. And that's the only action that will happen out of this is that it will be recorded as part of your minutes. And that's pursuant to the Code of Virginia 24.2 dash 675.
It's recorded in our record book.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't say you agree with them or disagree with them. It's just that they end up in the minute book in the clerk's office.
It's already done. They've already signed it to Richmond. I see no problem with putting it in the minute book. I also see no problem with having them explain how it worked at Currie. It'd be an interesting presentation.
So is there a way forward maybe where we agree to include this as a report attached to the minutes? And we cordially invite the Electoral Board to join us at our, one of our January meetings to discuss how the election was conducted, Mr. Fraser? Is that?
I would say either, either the entire Electoral Board or whoever they select, right? Because obviously if all three of them show up, like I said, it becomes a, a meeting of both bodies.
The recommended action, if this is adopted as part of the consent agenda, was record abstract of votes in December 7, 2020, meeting minutes.
So in terms of having a presentation, it seems to me like the actual registrar, whatever their new name for the registrar is, would be the most qualified person to present that.
She works for them.
She works for them, but she's, she's the one that actually is.
She may make the presentation, right?
Yeah, she knows everything.
Again, I, I want, I don't know if there's any protocol for it other than that we ask the Electoral Board and then they would, they would determine how they would conduct it. I thought if they could just give us a presentation publicly because the public really doesn't get involved at, at that level.
Right, it'd be, it'd be an educational.
Yeah, I think it would be.
All right. Is there a consensus then that we can include the report now and issue that invitation to the Electoral Board and the registrar?
Yeah.
All right. Do we need a vote to make that happen, Mr. Curry?
I think it would be cleanest.
Okay, well then I guess that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you both. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second by affirmation.
That takes us on to the presentations, item in the agenda, Mr. Curry, if you would be so kind as to queue those up for us, please.
Yes, Mr. LaGraff, Executive Director of the Rapid Hand and Rapid Hand Community Services Board, reached out to me just, I think Friday.
It was Friday, yeah.
With a kind of a quick burning issue, that's why this is an addendum item. And no need for me to really dig into the details because Mr. LaGraff is here and he will explain everything to you and what he does and doesn't need from the Board of Supervisors.
Sure, okay, thank you, Curry. I appreciate it. I really appreciate the very short notice, but we have a very short turnaround time. In November of this year, the governor signed what's called the Marcus Alert Legislation. And it's a little confusing because when you think alert, you think of Amber Alerts. It has nothing to do with anything like an alert system across the state. What the Marcus Alert Legislation seeks to do and mandates in Virginia is a behavioral health response to those crisis calls in our community that currently now law enforcement is responding to. A lot of times you think of like an embedded behavioral health specialist going out on calls where someone is having a mental health, substance abuse, developmental disability crisis. It is now in law where in Virginia, everybody across Virginia is going to be mandated to implement this type of a response system. The goal is to divert people from our state hospitals, divert people from our state crisis centers as well. As part of the legislation, the Department of Behavioral Health is charged with implementing this new law. They are seeking one organization in each of the five regions across Virginia to begin piloting this response program beginning in December of 2021. Unfortunately, and the reason I'm here such quickly, is that they mandate that we give notice to the Department of Behavioral Health of our interest to be that organization by January 4th. So for our region in Virginia, we are what's called Region One, which stretches from Winchester to Lynchburg to Fredericksburg. So it's a very large geographic region. There are nine community service boards like our organization that encompass that region, but we would like to apply to be the community service board that pilots it. There's a couple of real, I think, fundamental reasons why. There's funding attached to early implementation of the program. Additionally, because of our unique nature of suburban and rural areas that our five counties represent, I think it's fundamental that we develop a program in Virginia that is able to sufficiently respond into our rural areas like Rapid Hand County. And then lastly, as part of that, it requires local government support to come forward as the community service board that is looking to implement this and be chosen as part of the legislation. So that's the full purpose. I know Gary had sent some information for you, which I believe he has passed out. If there's any questions that any members of the Board of Supervisors have, I'd be happy to answer them for you. But it's law that's coming through. We would like to believe that we are much better designing a system that we can all live with than having someone else design a system and trying to adapt it to fit our area.
So is it my understanding that you're ultimately seeking a, a letter of recommendation or something?
Yes, I need to be able to affirmatively respond that yes, I have talked to local government and local government is supportive of us moving forward and our application to be an organization looking to be an early implementer of, of the law.
So is your request to us for moral support and not financial support?
Moral support, no financial, I'm not asking for money this time. I'm, I'm sure I will be back soon enough to ask for more money at some other day, but not this time.
Okay, and, and by agreeing to this, does this put us on the hook for financial aid? Is it a later date for that purpose?
No, it does not. No. It's just purely to say, just go ahead and see if you can be chosen as the organization to implement in our region.
Okay.
You do realize that it's mostly blank paper? It's, it's some wording, but mostly blank paper. So it's kind of vague on what you want us to do.
Well, I, I do understand that because I think part of the initial implementation of a pilot is to figure out what will work. I don't know if, if boards of the members of this board are familiar. We actually are currently running an embedded behavioral health specialist program in Culpeper and in Falkir County. And in Falkir County, I think is probably a model that will most resemble what will happen with the Marcus Alert Legislation. We have a licensed clinician who actually sits at the Falkir County Sheriff's Office. And when a call comes into Falkir County dispatch that is related to someone in a behavioral health crisis, suicide, something along those lines, our staff actually goes out and meets law enforcement at that site and is able to do counseling on site, is able to deescalate critical situations, and I think most importantly, is able to make linkages to get those individual support. Because if they, if we don't know about them and if it's law enforcement only responding, a lot of the times we don't know about these people who are really struggling in our community, law enforcement sees them over and over and over again. And so by us going out and meeting with them, when the call comes in, we are able then to follow up with either case management, peer support, or other services so that people are not flooding law enforcement calls over and over again.
Well, I understand, maybe recognize that there's a need for that. I don't hardly see how a trained social worker is going to be able to deescalate certain situations that may actually cause more harm.
There, there, well, again.
Or put more people at harm.
Well, I think the, the model is really designed so that it's a team, so that we respond with law enforcement. So law enforcement's role is to make sure it is safe. Once a situation is safe, we have found in, I think, national studies have shown it's very effective by being able to put safety plans in place for people, by able to pull in other resources that law enforcement does not have access to. You are saving trips to the hospital, trips to the crisis assessment center, which takes law enforcement time because they have to stay and possibly transport people, being able to prevent diversions from state hospitals.
Given that the region's so large, are there others that are trying to take this position as well?
I'm, I'm not sure if they're at this point in time or, or not. But I do believe that based on, you know, certain structures, just the makeup of, you know, some of like Region 10, which is Charlottesville, there'll be a strong push as well. So I think it's very, again, one of my concerns is what might work in Charlottesville or Fredericksburg probably doesn't work in Madison and Orange and here. And so I think it's critically important because most of Virginia looks a lot more like us than it does them, that we develop a system that I think can be effective in working in this type of environment.
I guess my question would be, clearly, we're a county that you're hitting probably first.
Yes.
What is, what is your timeline for Falkir, Culpeper, and other counties look like? Because I'll, I'll be honest with you, I don't like to get something over a weekend and be expected to vote on it Monday.
Sure, I understand.
I think there are people that I should engage for their opinions and I have not had an opportunity to do so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I appreciate that. And again, it just was the, we received the notification late and the timing was a very short time.
I understand it's not an ideal situation. I appreciate the urgency.
Madison tomorrow evening. I'm at Falkir's Public Safety Committee meeting, I think on the 16th. Orange County, their county administrator in looking and discussing with a couple of members of their board felt comfortable just providing a letter of support himself without running it through with the board. And Culpeper, I'm meeting on January 5th. So.
So we do have some time.
Yes.
Because Culpeper's not till January 5th.
Right, I, I, and I will respond to them with a, I've talked to their, but their meeting's, they just don't have a meeting before our responses do.
Very good.
So is there any advantage to a quicker response to your request in terms of funding? In other words, it's all going to happen at the same time?
Correct, yes. My response to them is due January 4th, that we, our board has met and the executive committee has approved us moving forward. So the, my letter of intent to the state is due on January 4th. So I just need to round things up before that point in time. And I believe this was your meeting time.
So our January meeting wouldn't be in time to help you out on that.
Yeah, that's why I apologize. Again, I understand how short the turnaround process was.
Well, we had talked about having a special meeting in December. We could certainly do that, too.
Well, I got no problem with going ahead with it today, but not that I intend to run across a bipolar schizophrenic with an AK-47 in the meantime. But I don't have any problem with.
Yeah, I would like, you know, there is no financial obligation by any of the counties. This is legislation that will be enacted. The question really is, do we want to be looked at and apply to be a pilot to start early? And as we're already doing some of this work in some of the other counties based on some private foundation funding, we believe we're a good county to, or good organization to start it, as well as make sure, you know, like I said, I'd much rather be at the front of these things in the backend.
So could we see what the rest of the board thinks about it?
Absolutely. Or if you want to make a motion, we can, we can have some second discussion.
I prefer to see what, how the mood is on this first. Gary, you got it?
I have no issue with it.
I don't have any issues either.
I don't have anything to read to have issues with, that's the problem. I mean, it's kind of vague.
So you'd rather wait?
I, I would if we're going to perhaps have another meeting this month.
Okay, so it's, it's not going to affect us either way. We can wait, yeah.
No, I, I'm, I'm fine for waiting and any questions you might have about it, you know, I'm, I'm happy to answer.
If people feel strongly about it and you think it's urgent enough, we should have a vote today and I think you'd have a majority to pass it, but I don't feel comfortable doing it. That doesn't mean that you shouldn't.
Mr. Curry, do you have anything to add on this?
Well, only that it is December and I generally would worry that you may not have another meeting. And so in action that you take, you may take that into consideration. You, I believe your next meeting is the 4th, but it would be at this time of day and that would be absolute last minute for you. that would be absolute last minute for you.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this today. And I don't just see any, I can't visualize any harm that that would do. And it might save us time later, and if it would help, it looks like it's going to happen anyway, so if it helped your cause, that's, that's good. And I do think it's an issue to deal with mental problems in times of stress. And if this, if this is set up to help with that, I'm all for it. So I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve this support letter today.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Is there any further discussion? I would just add that please know that, you know, my concerns with this have nothing to do with you, Mr. Graff, or your organization, which is wonderful, and I really do appreciate that you.
I apologize for the very short notice, and I would never do it, found it this way.
And I appreciate that you are very mindful of the scale of Rappahannock County and the nature of Rappahannock County in the way you undertake your mission here. So I do appreciate that.
And he is a resident of Rappahannock.
And you are a resident of Rappahannock.
Not Hampton District.
Oh, no, I can never remember my district. I was at.
You live in Chris's district.
Yes, that's right.
So as long as, as long as we know. So thank you, Mr. Graff. Mr. Frazier?
I have to look against it. I don't have enough information.
All right, Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain for the reasons I've already enumerated.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm happy to come back even if you do have the December meeting.
We'd love an update, of course, whenever you would like to visit us, Mr. Graff.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the presentation of the fiscal year 2020 audit by Robinson Farmer Cox and Associates by Josh Roller. Mr. Curry, is there anything you need to say about this before we get started?
Just very briefly, Mr. Roller is here. He's going to address the board. You have in front of you a copy of comprehensive annual financial report, as well as letters that go along with that, which Mr. Roller, I'm sure, will introduce to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roller.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me. In front of you, you should have the actual audit report as well as three letters. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible, and would be happy to answer any questions you guys have throughout the presentation or at the end. The first letter at the top of it's called the communication with those charged with governance. This is a standard letter of communication that we are required to issue to you all every year at the end of the audit. A few things there. The first paragraph under significant audit matters, it talks about how the accounting policies and procedures are the responsibility of management. We're just issuing an opinion on those. And for this year, for 2020, there were no significant changes to accounting policies. There's no significant changes to accounting pronouncements that there have been in the last couple of years. So much easier to compare to prior year audit reports as well. Onto the second page of that, the very top thing there, there were no disagreements with management on any accounting policies or any accounting issues. Management representations, this is where we obtain a management representation letter from management before the report is issued. This kind of lays out that they have disclosed everything that needs to be disclosed, everything that should be recorded has been recorded. The other two letters there are both letters that are from our audit procedures that are not part of the actual audit report itself. The first has to do with the requirement from the Auditor of Public Accounts, the APA, where we have to test certain requirements related to VRS retirement plan. And then the other one is our management letter for some, some issues that came up throughout the audit that didn't rise to the level of actually being in the audit report itself. And from there, we can actually get into the audit report. We'll start on page one. Page one is our independent auditor's opinion. And this is where we have the unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. It's the best opinion that we can issue to you all. The next part of the report, I'll point your attention to pages seven and nine, exhibits three and five. These are your balance sheet income statement for your governmental funds. The first column there is your general fund, shows your net change in fund balance for the year on exhibit five. And exhibit three will show your balance sheet, your assets, liabilities, and fund balance. On page nine there, the total change in the fund balance for all governmental funds was $411,000. And the first column there, the change in general fund, fund balance was $717,000. You'll see that towards the bottom of the page. The next section of the report, pages 12 through 81, these are the footnotes to the financial statements. These provide a lot more detail and explanation of certain items that are, that show up on the financial statements. The first one I'll point your attention to, note seven, which is pages 25 through 27. These, this is your capital asset notes. It shows your long-term assets, broken out by the governmental activities, the school board activities, as well as the recreation authority. The note right after that, note eight, has to do with your long-term obligations. This includes any debt as well as the net pension liability and net OPEB liability that are determined by actuaries. The next part, still in the footnotes there, page 80, note 25, this is upcoming GASV pronouncements that will affect the county in future years. As part of the COVID pandemic, they pushed most of these implementation dates back by at least a year. The first, the two that I'll kind of reference here, the first one, GASV 84, does go into effect for fiscal year 2021. And the one potential impact it would have on Rappahannock County would be school activity fund audits will potentially need to be reported as part of the school, school funds. It would be a separate fund. It wouldn't affect the school operating fund, kind of the same way that the cafeteria fund is reported, kind of as a separate. The next one would be GASV 87. This one's a couple of years out. It's not implement, the implementation date is not till fiscal year 2022. The reason I'm talking about it now is this will have a significant impact on the county as well as all governmental entities, where it kind of no longer, there's no longer a differentiation between operating leases and capital leases, where now they're all going to be considered capital leases. It will require an asset liability for all leases from, with the county. And, you know, this is a few years out. We're planning on issuing a lot more guidance on how to implement this and what needs to start to be, kind of start to be pooled going forward. The next exhibit on the next page there, page 82, exhibit eight, this is your general fund budgetary schedule. This shows your revenues and expenditures of the general fund, broken out by, has your original budget, amended, amended budget, and then your actual revenue and actual expenditures. Pages 110 through 114, these are your school board financial statements, exhibits 31 through And then page, page 118 is the start of the stat tables. These provide a better comparison when trying to look back at future, past years, which has usually 10 years' worth of information for various different numbers. And then the last section of the report starts on page 131. This is our compliance section of the report. This is where we, these are the second and third letters that we actually issue. The first one will be, it's our audit report on the governmental auditing standards. Again, we issued a clean opinion. We have to test certain things related to just governmental accounting, governmental auditing. And then the next two pages later will be our independent auditor's report on, related to uniform guidance, which is what kind of governs the federal compliance piece. That's just related to federal compliance requirements. Both of those, again, are clean opinions. And then towards the end after that will be our schedule of expenditures of federal awards. This shows all the federal awards and federal expenditures, rather, not awards, federal expenditures of the county and school board. The total between the two on page 136 is that $1.8 million. I know that was a very quick summary of the entire report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or if you, you know, want to read it further and have questions further down the road, Mr. Curry, I'm sure would be happy to put us in touch.
So is this report basically public knowledge?
Yes.
And it is posted to board docs?
Yeah.
And how many counties do you all do this work for?
I don't know the exact number. I know we're right around 70% of the counties in the state.
Around 70%?
Yeah, give or take.
Probably about 70 counties.
Yeah, give or take. We don't do the, you know, the very, the large Loudoun County, Fairfax counties, but we kind of.
So I'm curious, so how do we compare to the other counties in terms of our financial stability?
I don't know if I'd be comfortable giving an opinion on that without, without looking at others.
You said it's public knowledge, so.
There's, there's no cause for concern that we came across. That's part of our audit procedures. If there's any potential financial stress, the APA requires us to kind of.
Right.
And there was none of that, that.
All right. Do you have any counties that y'all do this for that are completely out of debt?
That have no debt?
No debt.
Not that I'm aware of. Our Blacksburg office does all the southwest Virginia counties. If there was one, that might be the one. But the ones that I manage, that there's none.
Okay. I was just wondering. I mean, we're close to being out of debt, but I think by the time we get there, we're going to be doing some improvements. And it's going to be the end of that scenario.
Short-lived.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'll be quick. Speaking of debt, bad debt, obviously, you, I'm sure in your audit and working with our treasurer, know that there's been a concerted effort to recover bad debt in the form of delinquent property taxes. Do you feel good about where we're headed on that? And do you feel, I know you don't want to compare us to other counties without information about other counties on hand, but, I mean, just in isolation, you feel good about our bad debt load currently?
Just comparing it to before the new treasurer came on, it is much improved. You know, that's been a couple of years now, but, you know, off the top of my head, there was no cause for concern.
And measured against revenue, would that be a reasonable way to, to, to look at it?
Yeah, and what, actually, let's see, I might have got lucky and flipped right to it. Tables, table six on page 127, this shows, you know, total tax levy for the year, your current collections, as well as the delinquent.
Yep. Yeah. So sure, as a share of, as a share of tax revenue, it's improved, but the absolute amount is somewhat the same across a 10-year period, it seems.
Right.
Okay. Okay. And then in terms of good debt, Mr. Parrish just alluded to the fact that our, our current debt load is not significant. As members of this governing body, thinking about debt capacity, especially with large capital projects coming online, one of our citizens during the public comment period mentioned renovation of the courthouse, renovation of other buildings.
Right.
What should we think about in terms of debt capacity, just, I mean, just as a general rule?
As a general rule, I would look at it from a budgetary side. You're just looking at total, principal total interest that you're going to have to pay on a year-end basis. And if it can fit into the budget, I think is.
Many localities will have a debt policy, and they'll have ratios, debt to, per capita number, maybe a debt to assessed value number. If we don't have such a policy, it's something the board can look at in the future if we're really thinking about issuing any substantial amount of debt.
Okay. Very quickly, in the two, in the two letters appended, it looks like all of your findings, and apologies to the superintendent, I don't mean to single you out, but I just want to understand what's going on here. It looks like there are three separate findings related to accounting at the school board side of things. If you, I don't need details, but just want to know the significance of these findings.
On the management letter, the one-page comment, this was an isolated incident. The dollar amount was not significant enough for it to affect the financial statements in a material way.
Okay.
And we found it as a very isolated incident. And on the other letter, the VRS attestation letter, the county school board algorithms, they're required to submit VRS payments to VRS, you know, has to be scheduled, approved, and confirmed, and actually sent by the 10th of the following month.
Okay.
And then also, we're required to test certain census data, meaning, you know, birthdays, you know, social security number, start employment date, various things like that as well, which are, those two things are related to.
Okay, so item one is immaterial, and then the others are more procedural? Is that how you?
Yeah, there's, so the, the VRS report there, that's a separate requirement that the APA requires, that it's kind of separate from the entire audit, where we have to test, very detailed testing with VRS employees.
Okay, I see.
And both are very minor and no material effect on the financial.
And Dr. Grimsley's team has clear instructions on how to eliminate these irregularities? Okay. Then, I guess my last question, I apologize for taking so much time. Table one, pages 118 to 119, this is on the expense side, and then similar, similarly 120 to 121 on the revenue side. I think it's a useful presentation, and as you pointed out, it covers a 10-year period. I'm curious about the columns and the categorization of expenses and then revenue. Just, and this gets away from having to compare us to other localities, just looking at Rappahannock County in isolation, and looking at the categorization of expenses on the one hand in these categories, and then revenue on the other. Is it your opinion that, looking at 2020, just as one example, that these, this disaggregation of our total expenses and disaggregation of total revenue looks normal without irregularity? Is it what you'd expect to see?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay. No outliers at all?
No, nothing that, that raised a red flag on our side.
All right, that's, that's all I have. Yeah, I may follow up, and I'll ask Mr. Curry to put me in touch with you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Looks great.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Donahue?
Yes, thank you. Though, one question I had with CARES funding coming in and the importance of making sure we know where money comes and goes, especially for budgeting in the future, I'm just wondering if your firm's going to be doing anything specific to the CARES funding in the audits?
So, for the CARES funding, it, certain places this year, it depends on how much was actually spent compared to what was actually received. We had to audit, and we actually audited as a major program for the single audit purposes on the, I believe, the very last page of the entire report. It lists the major, the federal major programs that we had to audit, and that's based on when the last time we audited it was, as well as, you know, the dollar amount. And so we did audit it this year, just to get, it got to a certain level that we needed to look at it. On, if you also look at exhibit three, page seven, under liabilities, that unearned, unearned revenue number, 360, 386, that was the amount that was received before June 30th that wasn't actually spent. And then I believe there was a whole, a second half that was received in August or September that equaled the, the first installment as well, so.
So that, that dollar amount was the amount that the board ultimately appropriated into 21, in addition to the second allotment from the state?
Right.
Perfect.
That's all I have.
Any further questions, Mr. Frazier?
No, no, just kind of.
No, I didn't have any questions at this time either. Thank you, Mr., there's no other questions from the board. Thank you, Mr. Roller.
I just want to thank Mr. Roller and RFC for helping us actually get this done on time, which we're now two years running, which is.
Sound jinx is scary.
We had a string of infinity years, and now we're moving.
There, there's a lot of effort that has to be done on the county, as well as the school board side as well, to hit that deadline. So we, we thank you, thank both of them for all their work.
Are you still auditing the super authority?
Our firm does, I do not.
Your firm does. Do you have any idea whether that's called up?
I can check.
Okay. Yeah, if you'd let Mr. Curry know about that one.
We can check on that, and I'll, I'll get to, I'll get with him.
And thanks to everyone involved for their diligence in getting it done on time. I am a little concerned that we have repeat items on here. Mr. Roller, this is an address to you from, that are a comment of something that was brought to the school board's attention last year. And I, I think, you know, part of what we have to consider as a board is communication with our peers on the school board. And I would make a motion that we send a letter to the. And I would make a motion that we send a letter to the school board and kindly, nicely point out that we have had, it brought to our attention that there were issues in reporting, and asked them to remedy so that we do not have a repeat comment next year as well.
How many, what it, really good point, so when it says a repeat, a repeat finding, any idea how many years? Is it just two years?
I believe it was just two years. I can check on that as well.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mr..
I mean, I think, I, I understand mistakes happen. I think that if there's not communication and the mistakes continue, we have no one to fault but ourselves.
Right, I agree.
And so in that end, I would, we, we should draft a friendly letter to our peers and ask for their cooperation to have a blemish-free report next year. And I, I would look for, it sounds like you'd like to second, Mr. Woodson?
Sure, yeah, I'll second that.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rolla.
Thank you all.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate you coming in.
Is Mr. Karchner available at this time?
Dr. Karchner appears to be available.
Thank you very, very much.
I have unmuted Dr. Karchner. Hopefully you can hear us.
Welcome, Dr. Karchner. Your mic should be live now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just be telling you, Mr. Curry, to forward the slides one at a time. So next slide, please. As part of the presentation, we always go over the United States situation very briefly. As of December 7th, there were over 14 million reported cases and over 285,000 deaths recorded in the United States with COVID. Last week, the average daily COVID-19 mortality in the United States was almost 1,500 deaths per day. That's the highest since May 14th, and it appears to be increasing. Hospitalizations were at, at a high as well of more than 85,000. From a national perspective, we are experiencing significant growth of cases. Over the last two weeks, U.S. cases have increased 12%, deaths 29%, and hospitalizations 38%. Next slide, please. Virginia's tested over 3.5 million residents by PCR with a current seven-day average positivity rate of 10.8. Our health district tested almost 59,000 residents by PCR with a 6.7% seven-day positivity rate. Now, even though our positivity rate and our case numbers have been influenced by an outbreak at a correctional facility in Culpeper, we're also seeing increased community spread. We're seeing more and more cases in the home setting, to the parties, congregation settings, and whatnot. We just want to remind friends and families to help us and our healthcare workers by following the recommendations that we put forth all the, all the time. COVID doesn't care that we're tired. It's real, it's serious, and we can do something to mitigate the spread. Next slide, please. Now you see the graph here, this is by county in our health district. A large uptick in May, mid-May was due to a targeted testing event in Culpeper. The increase towards the end of the graph is partially due to an outbreak in that correctional facility in Culpeper, plus the remainder of the cases our community acquired. And this increase appears to be temporarily related to Halloween, when people gathered in groups and really started to get tired of all the public health messages. Between March 29th and December 7th, the health district has reported 5,072 cases, 240 hospitalizations, and 60 deaths. Culpeper has almost half of those with 2,385, Quack Year County with 1702, Madison with 205, Orange with 670, and Rappahannock County with 110. And that's an increase in Rappahannock County of 18 since last COVID, so that's a significant rise of blood. Next slide, please. Now this is just a graphic presentation of how it affects different groups. You can see the blue shows the distribution of cases over the age groups. And you can see it skews more into the 20, 30, and 40-year-old age groups. Hospitalizations skew a little bit older, as you can see, 50 to 59, to 60 to 69, and 70 to 79 age groups are the highest percentages. And that's, you can see there are really skewed towards the elderly. And yet we're seeing that all over the state, as well as the nation and the world, we're seeing that kind of distribution. It's affecting in a serious way more elderly than, than anybody else. Next slide, please. So if I depressed you up to this point, I'm sorry, but things will get better. Small vaccine candidates appear to be more promising than we hoped. And you can see there's the two RNA vaccines put out by Moderna and Pfizer have reported really good effectiveness. Logistically, they are going to be a challenge because they do require very cold temperatures in their transport and in the storage. Now, just a few free words about, further about vaccines. To denitrification, companies have to show that the vaccine is safe. They have to show that it's more than 50% effective and can be produced reliably and safely. Now, people may ask about the uniqueness of the vaccine. Now, the technology has not been approved by the FDA before, but it's not because it wasn't safe, it's because the past RNA vaccines have not been effective. Researchers have been working on this type of technology, really since SARS came out in 2003. And they've tried over the last five years related to Ebola, Zika, diabetes, and HIV, and haven't been able to do it. So the main issue is probably that the vaccine enters the cells because of the RNA, RNA vector breaks down so quickly in the body. So in a way, this vaccine is safer because there's no infectious elements, don't mean to your person. And you see your friends posting on Facebook that this vaccine will integrate into your DNA. That's not true. Messenger RNA, which is what this vaccine has, does not enter a cell's nucleus, so there's no potential for that. So while we don't have long-term data, based on the data we do have, we don't expect long-term side effects. Next slide, please. This is in relation to the holidays and for Thanksgiving, which we've just been through, as well as coming up. CDC recommends diagnostic testing once three days before and three to five days after high-risk international or domestic product. Obviously, watch distance, wear a mask, wash your hands. That mantra continues. The recommendations are, if you do travel, particularly for holidays, the quarantine there is seven days. If you get a negative test result, three to five days after you get home. If you don't test, you should quarantine yourself for 14 days. Next slide. This briefly goes over the executive order, which came out a few weeks ago. It basically ordered, executive order 63 was amended, changing the masking requirements. It required all individuals in the Commonwealth aged five and over, when entering, exiting, traveling through, or spending time inside the settings listed in the order, cover their mouths and face, regardless of the distance. That was the change of the age. Next slide, please. Executive Order 67, you can see that there, it changed times for on-firmers, alcohol sale consumption, closure of food establishments. As you see, increased occupancy allowances, and changes in size of public gatherings. It didn't limit the size of religious services, but if they're more than 25, they are subject to the distance thing and masking that are found elsewhere. Next slide. We've got a couple of new testing initiatives. One of those is in Orange County, we have a, we have a, an initiative with them to perform testing with Orange Family Practice, as well as there's a new effort between Culpeper, Novant, UVA, our health district, and COVID testing LLC. Both of these sites allow us to bring rapid testing to the area better than we had before. The woman in Culpeper is across from the hospital, EVA, behind the health department, Monday through Friday, eight to four, Saturdays, nine to one. And we run free testing until the money we have runs out. Patients that are, that meet the following criteria, they can be, if it's a district resident, a resident of many of our five counties, or if they're a healthcare worker, school worker, or first responder that works in our health department, or in our health district area, or if you're symptomatic or close contact of a case, as well as primary or priority given to the owner and under insurer. So all of those folks that meet that criteria will get free testing, like I said, until the, until the money runs out. And the last thing about vaccines is I want to trip a little bit and just discuss briefly, because I know there's lots of questions out there. And we have as many questions as everybody else. The, this thing is changing and developing rapidly. Virginia is going to mirror the CDC recommendations for vaccination protocol. That means there will be a tiered approach. The first tier will be frontline healthcare providers and long-term care facility residents. The health, frontline healthcare providers will be given the vaccine through hospitals around the state. The long-term care facility folks will be given their vaccines through pharmaceuticals. Number of pharmaceuticals signed on nationally to provide the long-term care. If more vaccine is made available, the health department, including ours, will be deeply involved in the vaccination tiers. In other words, there will be more healthcare workers at that, critical infrastructure workers, medically vulnerable folks. And this rule out, we anticipate, in the next few weeks, a month, that it can, uh, to happen. Our plan, our planner right now, Kathy Tatter, is setting up meetings with the emergency management folks in all five counties this week to share this rapidly evolving situation. Now, it may be a few months before the vaccine reaches the general public, but it will look a lot like our flu vaccine exercises that we do in our counties each fall, by giving that vaccine to all of our citizens that wanted and need it. So without any questions.
Any questions from the board members?
I have a couple. Did somebody else go first?
I would just ask, make sure you're close to your mic. I don't know how well, Mr. Dr. Karchner can hear us.
Not very well.
Questions?
Someone wants to go first? Well, Dr. Karchner, I had a couple of questions, maybe. I just wondered, you, you say that the numbers of hospitalizations and the number of people testing positive have been on the increase in Rappahannock County?
Not necessarily hospitalizations, but the numbers of the cases.
Yeah. But simply because they test positive, then they may not be symptomatic?
They may not be. Some are, some aren't. But there is a correlation with rising cases, as the numbers get larger, you will eventually have more hospitalizations.
So without a vaccine, the hospitalizations, the time that patients are in hospital, has that increased or decreased? Do you, do you know?
Overall, in our health district, we've seen an increase in hospitalization.
The, the length of stay?
Length of stay? I don't have any data in front of me that talks about length of stay. The providers who provide the hospital and the physical care unit care are getting better at treating the illness, but it still is a very difficult type of care that they have to do. And, and we're, we're seeing incremental changes in that, but overall, it's still a very severe condition if you have to go to hospital.
And given my own adverse reactions to flu shots, I just wonder, with the short turnaround time on, on this COVID-19 vaccine, how do we determine what the effective rate may be, or what the adverse reactions may be to it? I mean, are we, are we basically asking the public to be the guinea pig?
Dr. Karchner? Oh, okay, there you go. Sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I didn't quite hear the, the tail end of that question.
I'm sorry. I, I just say, with my own adverse reactions to flu shots, I just wonder, with, you know, we've had like 70 years to work on flu vaccines, and yet I think the effective rate is below 50%. So given the quick turnaround in this COVID-19 outlay of the vaccine, since, I mean, do we have any idea what the effectiveness rate may be, or what the possible side effects would be? Or are we basically asking the public to be guinea pigs?
I think they have a much better handle on the effectiveness. The data shows that both the vaccines coming out from Pfizer and Moderna show effectiveness of over 90%. It's much more effective than the flu vaccine ever has been. The, so far, the short to medium range side effects don't appear to be, certainly don't appear to be something that would cause the FDA or the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, committee of the CDC, which approves the vaccine, to cause them concern and stop the trials. As far as the vaccine numbers themselves, they, they tested it on as many people as they test on a new vaccine at any point in time. You know, the tens of thousands of people took the vaccine. So they did shorten the, they did shorten the vaccine trial of giving the vaccine to people. It does remain to be seen, and it's duly noted, the long-term effect of the vaccine. We don't know, because obviously we haven't been giving it long-term. And that's the case with any vaccine, when you first roll it out. If you have a vaccine that has a side effect, every five million doses, you won't know that until you start giving millions of doses. So we'll have to see. But like I said, that's, that's a, that's a, I do love that.
I think that's all I have right now.
I guess if I could, Dr. Karchner, if you could indulge me, I guess my questions relate to some of the key indicators that we monitored when this all first started, which is the, the percentage of positivity with the increase in the testing options that are available to us. How much of the increase that we're seeing is because of the additional testing that's available? And I guess the other things that we've always kept an eye on are how much of what we're seeing is institutional spreads in settings like prisons and assisted living facilities, where there is a higher percentage of, of people contracting the virus simply because of the environment. So how much of what we're seeing is, is influenced by the institutional spread? And then the last question that I had for you is, is one of the driving factors for concern at the beginning of this pandemic was the availability of hospital beds for people that may need them. And so I'm, I'm wondering what our hospital bed situation in surrounding areas is like, and I would just like to answer a few of those questions.
Yeah. Hospital bed facility, and I see that that is not overwhelmed at this point, but it's enough where the hospitals in the region are keeping a very close eye on it. As far as the positivity rate goes, I've never been a big proponent of positivity rate. I know the, I know the BDH central office likes to use it as a metric, but really the positivity rate just depends on where you look for testing, where you go to test. If you test in an area where you know there's a lot of people that are going to be positive, then you're going to get a lot of positive. If you go to areas, groups, and populations that aren't, then you'll get negatives. So many times throughout this pandemic, we have gone to.
Except in trade up, one way or the other. The problem that we get into with this one in particular is that the people that are drawing the line in one area are casting aspersions of those who want to draw on the line elsewhere and go both ways.
The other thing I was hoping you could do, it's my understanding that it's a 10 to 15 minute conversation, no masks, face to face, is about the window of time that you can transfer the virus from one person to another. In a room setting, I'm wondering, with some people wearing masks, some people not wearing masks, we're at least six feet, in most cases, away from each other, but we're in a room for multiple hours, what's the likelihood of someone just sitting on a bench transmitting to another person in the room?
Well, actually, the CDC, a few months ago, maybe six weeks ago, changed its stance on that. He used to say, you know, 15 minutes around somebody who's a case, we do it, but now it's 15 minutes, a few of it during the day. So it would be a one minute here, five minutes here, and add 15 minutes. But that's kind of the way we have been treating all of our case investigations anyway. So the more you're, the closer you are, the more in contact you are with somebody, and indoors certainly has more risk than outdoors, you'll, just will result in more transmission. What those actual numbers are, I don't think anyone knows, but based on the CDC's research and guidelines, it seems like 15 minutes total during the day around somebody with COVID is going to make it very likely that you'll get, you'll get transmission. But what those exact numbers are, I don't know. I don't think it's right.
Okay, thank you. That was all mine.
My other questions, I just had a few things that I happened to think of that we've discussed, Dr. Karchner. One of them is, is that in the guidelines that are given, wash your hands, wear a mask, stay six feet away, I feel like VDH has really missed one of the top things, and it's a personal pet peeve for me. Stay home if you're sick. If you're sick, do not leave the house. Do not go have a false sense of security because you're wearing a mask. That's just common courtesy at any time to me. If you're sick, stay home, or at least be mindful when you're around other people. And that's one of the, the main guidances that I think has fallen by the wayside, and I think it's incredibly unfortunate, because to me, it's, it's the most important. I know we had discussed in the past, I'd asked you, Dr. Karchner, if, the question had come up from a constitutive mind about a flu shot clinic, and I asked you about it, and the direction was that if folks want a flu shot to contact the health department, is that still what they should do?
Well, I have to see if we still have flu vaccine, because we typically don't carry a lot in, in the health departments, and I'll give back a few on that and find out if we have any remaining.
Okay.
Usually run out ourselves, you know, we typically don't stock a lot. And can I speak to that? Stay home and you're safe.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
I, I totally agree, that was part of our, part of our messaging early on, it's sort of been left behind, but we, at least locally here, we bring it back every now and then. I'm going to start including that in my messages to all the county partners.
Thank you, Dr. Karchner.
I totally agree. We, we see so many times that people have transmitted, this is coming from our case investigators, people have transmitted illness when they've gone to work sick, and so I think I'll give that.
And then, the other thing that I know we had touched on in the past, Dr. Karchner, is, you know, we had teamed up with other counties for testing events, but it was always felt like there wasn't a need for a testing event here in the county, and I just wanted to make sure that you were still of the opinion that that was a way forward for Rappahannock, is that we did not need to hold testing events in the county.
Yeah, that touches on what I brought before about large, federal, random testing events, we just haven't gotten anything from them, and it, it is really taxing on our resources, particularly as we move into vaccination time, which is going to be almost on the go, folks. But I think still, that's the best way forward. Obviously, if we had an outbreak, say, at, at an area somewhere in Rappahannock County, we would certainly test there, like we do other tests, but we just had a testing event November 12th, one of those show up, whoever you are, events, and just after the election in Bryan Station, Culpeper County, and we tested 75 people and there were zero positives. That's just, that's just not a good use of resources, and that's, it's for the key in every one of our random testing events, except one where we knew we had an issue in the Hispanic community and called that for a way back. So I think that's the way forward.
Well, it may not have been a testing event that you liked, but it sounds like a great testing event to me. So, thank you, Dr. Karchner. Does anyone have any other questions from the board?
Dr. Karchner, this is Kir Whitson. I just want to take a moment and thank you for your very cogent and clear written and verbal communication over the last nine months. Your weekly reports are excellent, and I think you've done a super job of providing the public with digestible, understandable advice and suggestions on how to keep themselves safe, so I just want to compliment you in that regard, because I'm sure you don't hear it enough. So, thank you very much.
All right. Chris Chaney, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karchner. Is there anything else from the board?
On the subject?
Yes, sir.
I just think that, based on, on the numbers as presented by Dr. Karchner, that it may be, maybe the proper time to lift the county's declaration of emergency for the COVID response. We're dealing with a very, very small number of people. We have more people involved in deer collisions, but we haven't declared a state of emergency for that.
Did you want to speak to anything of that nature, Dr. Karchner, or did you just want to speak to medical discussion?
Um, I'd stick to medical and public health discussion. I would say that the per capita rate in Rappahannock County is higher than Madison County, and some reason it approaches other counties throughout the, throughout the state. You don't look at absolute law numbers, you look at numbers for 100,000, so sometimes the law numbers can be deceiving.
Still, all in all, they're relatively low.
Well, and I would agree with you, Mr. Frazier, there are counties that have listed their state of emergency, notably Lee and Amherst Counties that have much larger populations that have been much further impacted by this than, than our county. I, I don't think it's any secret, I think it was in the newspaper, that I, I don't understand the, the function of the state of emergency in the county. If we had infrastructure, hospitals, things of that nature that were being affected in the county, I would understand it, but I, I just don't know what we're gaining from it.
So, we are, I think we have 107 cases in Rappahannock County, is that right?
110 was reported today.
But it's cumulative since March.
Oh.
Looking back at the rolling seven to 10 day numbers, it would be logical to assume that there's approximately 15 cases in the county.
15 cases?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm not sure if that's accurate. The, the, my reports, as I was just updating the report, we were at, I'm just pulling up here.
A check every day within like a 10, seven to 10 day window, and it should be about 15 cases. I don't mean to disagree with you, Gary.
But that, that number will never go down because it's cumulative.
Correct. It only goes up.
We were at 75 cases on November 19th, and we're at 110 right now.
Right, but it's the 7th of December. So, I mean, I would be looking at the end of November.
Well, there's more, there's more positive cases on a daily basis or a weekly basis now than there has been in the previous months.
But I, I've been told by, by medical professionals that didn't know each other, so I, when I heard it the first time, I asked the second one about it, and I've asked subsequent individuals in the medical field, you can get a false negative or a false positive on any test you take, except one. There's one test that you can have a false negative, but you cannot have a false positive, and that's if you take a test to see if you're pregnant. So, when the first medical professional told me that, I thought I would run it past the second one that didn't know the first one, and that lady was a registered nurse, and she said that she was four months pregnant with her second child when she took the test four different times and got negative results each time, visibly pregnant, and got four negative pregnancy results. So, just because somebody tests positive, doesn't mean they have it. Just like if they test negative, doesn't mean that they're clean. So, I, I don't know, I just think that we've got a substantial burden upon our, our citizenry, and I don't think there's really that much to be concerned with.
Mr. Curry, could you just outline for us what the practical effect of the current declaration of emergency is?
Well, it provides you the opportunity to take certain actions, like meet fully in electronic means if you so chose to or need to, and it is also linked to our access to FEMA funds, although we have not used or needed them. I do not know the connection to CARES funding or any future funding. If I were a congressman or a senator, and one of my areas said they didn't have an emergency, I think I'd have a hard time voting to send money there, but, but I don't know. I would turn that around and say practically, your current declarations have no impact on your citizenry. It's opportunity to take actions if necessary, and those actions are all driven by you as the board.
And so, what, in that summary, could we gain by dropping a declaration of emergency? I didn't hear anything.
You might feel better about it, that's about it.
I think the citizens may feel better about it.
If this, if this state of emergency allows us to have people that come on the Zoom to, you know, participate in our meetings, whereas if we didn't have that, they would not feel comfortable to come into a room and sit for an afternoon with people without masks, I would say that, and I do know of those people, that I would say that we should keep the state of emergency so that people can still participate in our government through, through, remotely.
We can always provide citizens the opportunity to provide, to access the meeting electronically, but you cannot preclude them from showing up physically if you assemble physically, and you cannot meet fully electronically unless it's about the emergency, without the declaration and the continuity of government ordinance that you've passed.
I, I, I see this, that there's real, no real practical purpose to keep it in place, though. I mean, there's nothing that precludes us from coming back with another version of it a month or two from now.
I mean, we could re-adopt it in the future if we need it. I, I did take a hard look at the other counties that have left it behind. I think it's a good practice to leave it behind if it doesn't serve a useful purpose. I don't know about you as my peers on this board, but I think that those three or four months we spent in electronic meetings were an absolute aberration, the amount of things we could have and should have gotten done this year. And in retrospect, I wish we had never declared it. I wish we continued to meet as a full body and in person. And I will continue to meet in person and do the job I was elected to do for as long as I am able, regardless of whether there's a state of emergency or not, but I think we would all be well served to set it aside and get on with the business of the county. I'm sorry, no applause, I do apologize.
My understanding that Culpeper just took this up and they decided to leave it in place, and I think there's only two other counties in the state that have decided to drop it.
Well, Culpeper, my understanding and reading that article is it was largely as a result of the opinion of their emergency manager, Director Wooton, I believe his name is, and his concerns with the hospital. Again, I return to the fact that we don't have a hospital, so I, I fail to see why we would need to keep it in place.
I would put that in the form of a motion.
And I would second.
Well, you've, you've adopted those documents by resolution, so you'd have to undo them by resolution. I suppose you could have a motion to ask me to draft a resolution or something, but...
I would amend my motion to state that, my motion is to task Mr. Curry as the county administrator to draft a resolution for a later meeting.
And I would still second. Is there any further discussion?
So, I don't really see how having this state of emergency, so-called state of emergency, declaration, whatever it is, it, it doesn't seem to be slowing us down. We're still having our meetings, we're still conducting our business. I don't really see how it changes anything. If, and I, and I also, a little fuzzy on the fact that if we are allowed money from the state because we're in a state of emergency, even though it may not be here now, it may come, I don't want to, you know, preclude our ability to receive that. So, I, I fail to see the disadvantage of being in this, in this so-called state of emergency. I mean, I don't feel like I'm in a state of emergency, but I don't, I just frankly don't see the disadvantage.
I guess it's just philosophical.
Yeah, it is, and there's, there's fear on one hand, and there's, I don't know what you call it, arrogance on the other hand, and, you know, it's, you know, you know, we're here to serve the, the public, and, and anything that concerns, you know, public safety is, is a big responsibility. And I don't see how, if we dropped the state of emergency, how it would necessarily endanger anybody's health, but God forbid, you know, if it did, I wouldn't want that on my conscience.
I, I don't see how it could endanger anybody's health. I think, you know, to me, I, I try to engage reality, and the reality I engage is that we are not, what, what does the useful purpose of the declaration of emergency serve? I don't see that it serves any useful purpose. So, why are we calling something, something that it's not?
Well, why are all the other counties doing it? I mean, if there's only two counties that's dropped it, all the other counties are apparently in a state of emergency, why are they in a state of emergency?
I, I think that there will be other counties that will begin to follow suit very soon.
Mr. Curry, you mentioned FEMA funding, there was a hook there, we would not be eligible for FEMA funding, correct?
That's my understanding.
And what would that, what would FEMA funding be directed toward if, if we call for it?
You have to apply for it, there are different categories, but...
But we could declare another state of emergency and qualify for it.
And for the fact? Probably.
And then, my second question is, a meeting like today, and we have people in the room who aren't wearing masks, people who are not in the room, who are not comfortable being in a room without people, with people who are not wearing masks, and presumably some of those people are participating electronically via Zoom. Absent the declaration of emergency, would we still have the ability to have hybrid-type meetings with the Zoom option, where, for example, we get a public comment from people who are at home?
Yes.
And if we found ourselves in a huge crisis around Christmas time, where there are hundreds of new cases in our, in our county, and we did not have a declaration of emergency in place, we would be precluded then from, based on your earlier explanation, would be precluded from entering into wholly electronic meetings, correct?
Unless they're solely about the emergency, in which you would have to do what happened last time, is you'd have to have a, a meeting solely about the emergency to pass an ordinance for continuity of government, and then follow that emergency ordinance.
Simply because the fact that the governor has declared a state of emergency, there still seems to be an effect at that level, wouldn't that automatically allow this board to meet? As long as it was along those guidelines of that emergency. That's what the code says, that the governor, if the governor declares an emergency, then it affects us downstream.
Now, you still have to declare local emergency pursuant to Code of Virginia.
We would have to, even though he's declared a state of emergency?
Yes.
I, I didn't understand it that way. I mean, we, we were conducting business under a state of emergency, but if, if he, if he has called a state of emergency and we meet just for that purpose, then I believe we were covered.
You can definitely do that.
So then, at that meeting, we could reinstate our local declaration of emergency and continuity of government, could we not?
Sure.
All we're really talking about is just, again, it's just philosophical.
It's not, there's a fiscal, what if we need, what if we need FEMA money tomorrow?
We're not going to need it tomorrow.
And I mean, there are natural emergencies where you then declare the state of emergency, and then you're then eligible for funding. It's very unusual to declare the state of emergency before the actual emergency.
We've had flooding, not, I don't think in December, but we've had serious flooding in January, and, and we could declare it right at that moment. I don't know, I think...
I think we need to think about it. I mean, this is, this is pretty sudden, and there's some stuff that I don't understand about the ramifications if we changed our status, and I'm not comfortable voting for that at this point.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Right, did you still want to go forward, Mr. Frazier?
I'm afraid that if we wind up being in the minority, we won't be able to bring it back at a later time, if it required one of the others to bring it back.
Well, I think we should go ahead and take a vote.
Other question?
All right, Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Mr. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And aye for me as well. All right, let's take a brief recess and come back and finish up this agenda item. Dr. Karchner, thank you again for joining us today.
Please mute. Thank you.
We're on Presentations, item three, the COVID-19 update. I did just want to let the rest of the board know that Mr. Goff did draft a statement, similar to the statement at the, at the schools that we were asked to read or post in advance of those meetings. It says, "The Governor of Virginia has issued Executive Order 63, as amended by Executive Order 67, requiring all individuals five years of age and older to wear masks or face coverings that cover the nose and mouth when entering, exiting, traveling through, and spending time inside public buildings, including local government facilities. Enforcement is overseen by the VDH, not local government. People having legitimate medical reasons for not wearing masks or face coverings may respond to VDH with their justifications. Thank you for your cooperation." So I just did want to let everyone know, I think we should post this at the, in the entryway before government meetings and have it posted on the, on the door downstairs, if that's agreeable to the other members of the board.
Good idea.
And then, the other items, Mr., are there any other concerns anyone has with this agenda item? Right, the, the COVID-19 update. I, I just wonder, I know that there's a lot of talk in the Commonwealth now about actions similar to Campbell County's action, taking a First Amendment sanctuary stance. I think that their stance was perhaps too strong, and I didn't know if there were any feelings by the other supervisors if that was something that we should entertain as a county taking a stance on.
So, this is the First Amendment, it just concerns COVID?
Yes.
Yeah, First Amendment, so free out of assembly.
So, you know, we could save a lot of time and effort in the future and just draft a resolution to endorse all the amendments, like now, we don't have just, we're cherry-picking amendments here, we might as well endorse them all.
Well, that's why I wanted to do it more of a...
Rappahannock County supports the Constitution of the United States and enforces all amendments.
Well, I, I guess...
And, you know, just cut to the chase, because we're just cherry picking one at a time.
Well, I guess to cut to the chase, we said that when we took an oath, and that's people's concern.
Well, let's do it again. Let's do it again.
So... I mean, I, I get, I get your concern in that regard, Mr. Parrish, but I guess that's why I wanted to talk about it, rather than drop the resolution.
Yeah, we just do them all, just do them all at one time, because what happens is, we get, we get them at one at a time, and we get this extraneous language that goes on record, you know, for example, when we became a Second Amendment sanctuary, we basically had, part of the resolution was that was, it was cumbersome and extraneous and could come back and bite us, that if any, if there's an infraction, we can take it to court, and it doesn't say what an infraction is, it doesn't say who decides what's the infraction is, and it doesn't say, or who commits an infraction, and it doesn't say who pays for it. And that's part of our amendments, that's on records, you know? So, by doing one at a time, we, we, and like the last time, we did this thing, it was talking about, you know, tying tourism with carrying guns.
Concealed carry.
And, you know, if we just go ahead and acknowledge to the rest of the world that we, Rappahannock County, supports all the amendments, and just, and, and why don't we do a blanket statement like that, and then we won't have to waste our time talking about these, these individuals?
I think that's a good idea. I think that's a good idea, and I, I think that it's a way to get ahead on, on this particular instance and address concerns in the future. I guess my other concern that goes hand in glove with your proposal is, is the bottom line for most people, is that we will not finance anything that runs contrary to the, to the statement that we're making in the resolution, because really, funding is our power. We can't endorse, we're not enforcement, we're, you know, we're not any of those things to any extent that's measurable, in my opinion, or impactful, in my opinion. But what we are is, is financial responsibility, and so it's, it's a statement, but it's also a statement that we would, we would not fund anything that runs contrary...
Fund what contrary?
To that resolution.
Contrary to what? I mean, I'm not sure.
Well, I think people's concerns, in particular with this First Amendment, businesses going on in other counties is, is enforcement funding.
If I can...
There's no enforcement.
Where is this on our agenda? I missed it.
Well, it's part of the discussion of the presentation.
But what's prompted our...
The COVID-19 update, these are all COVID-19-related subjects.
What has prompted our, I guess, piecemeal approach, as Mr. Parrish points out, he's correct, we, we've, we first adopted the Second Amendment support resolution, then, then we had a later version of it as well, but, and now the First Amendment seems to be, and focuses that the governor and the General Assembly at times in the past year have, have taken a piecemeal approach to attacking the Constitution and the different rights that the citizens have that are protected. So that's, that's what's prompted our piecemeal approach to, to defense of it. It's not that, hey, I pick out this one more than that one, it's, it's immediate response.
I like the word sanctuary. I was looking at Dr. Karchner's map, I noticed that Rappahannock County was as light blue as any county in the Commonwealth of Virginia, so I hereby declare Rappahannock County as a sanctuary in the sense that we're pretty well off compared to other counties in the Commonwealth, and we should be grateful for that.
I don't see anything about the First Amendment.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's related to COVID. I think it's absolutely related to COVID.
How?
Because it's an action that other counties are taking related to COVID as well, and people's concerns over the, over... people's concerns over the overreach from Richmond in regard to the situation.
In terms of, you know, in terms of freedom of speech?
Correct.
Well, even with my mask on, I can speak freely. I'm at a loss in what we're talking about here.
Well, if there's not any desire from any of the other members of the board to pursue that at this time...
What is, what are you asking us to pursue or not pursue?
Well, I think what Mr. Parrish hit on is a good approach to, you know, basically ask the Commonwealth attorney or the county administrator to prepare a resolution that affirms our commitment to upholding our oath and all of the amendments, and specifically state that we will not finance anything that runs with local county dollars, anything that runs contrary to that, and adopt it at our next meeting.
So how would this thing with the First Amendment cross county dollars? Can I give you an example?
Well, I think in particular, in some localities, there's prohibitions against family gatherings and things like that, and they're sending the police to go be the enforcement arm.
But they're getting paid anyway. Anyway, let's, we can, you know, let's put it on the agenda next time, so we can talk about it, if you like.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts on this, before we move forward?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think we're in a potentially difficult time right now with this pandemic, it seems to have gotten worse instead of better, and, you know, the last time we pulled one of these resolutions related to concealed carry draws a crowd, and I don't think that's what we need to be doing right now, I think it's a distraction. I have no problem with Mr. Parrish's idea, but I don't think this is the time or the place right now to take our eye off the ball, so to speak.
Well, I would agree with you, except I think going ahead and getting it done might prevent a bigger crowd later. Anybody else?
I don't have a problem with bringing it back next month.
All righty, that takes us on to appointments. Mr. Curry, if you'd be so kind.
Yes, you have a vacancy on your Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority due to resignation, and you've received applications. At an earlier meeting, the board has confirmed that you were willing to waive the requirement to advertise in the paper, knowing that you had two applications, and you still have two applications, so those applications are in the packet before you. Your local ordinance requires you to make this appointment by a resolution, and there is a resolution provided with the meeting materials with which an appointment can be made.
Thank you, Mr. Curry.
If I could, I've known one of the applicants for a long, long time, I believe he's a lifelong member, resident, rather, of Rappahannock County, and takes care of the county parks in Falkir, and I just think that Mr. Sam Forback would make an excellent appointee to the Rappahannock Parks and Rec Board.
I'm Mayor Chair Smith, since this is in the Wakefield District. Ms. Ritter, when she stepped down because of her appointment to BZA, recommended that Jennifer Aldrich submit an application for this position. Jennifer, I did get to speak with, she is very interested in the position, I believe she's a good fit. Her real focus, or one of her focuses, is really trying to get youth and adults time at the park, especially in a time when people need to be outside. She is comfortable with the commitment of time, she is on the Krebsner Fund Board, which I think she still is, and does not see any conflict there. And I think, given the situation of the park at the moment, her fundraising abilities would probably be very beneficial, and I would like to see her on this go ground, and in June, when we have the other openings, take up Mr. Fraser's, Samuel Forback, because I think he does have a lot of skills as well.
So we have a motion on the floor, for purposes of discussion, I'm going to second the motion.
I didn't hear Mr. Fraser's motion, there was no motion.
I thought you made a motion, Mr. Fraser.
I did make a motion for Mr. Forback. I mean, I don't know that they have to be appointed by district, I mean, certainly we did have a vacancy that arrived, that came, but, I mean, that's the process that we're using, I mean, this is how we've got a, when somebody recommends somebody to replace them on a body, I mean, this is why we've got a public authority, the Water and Sew Authority, that basically seems to be friends of a friend up there, and they don't even know anything about the operation of their plant. So I don't know, I mean, I thought we ended the situation where the member from a certain district got to make appointments because the Jackson District Representative on the Planning Commission was not recommended by that supervisor. So, I mean, it seems like we waiver from one extreme to the other when we make appointments, but, and all that has nothing to do with the qualification of either one of these candidates, but I just happen to know one more than the other, and I guess you know one more than the other.
Correct. If I could just get confirmation of the motion that it is to adopt the resolution with a particular name, that would be what you would need to do if you want to make this point.
Well, I had made it for Sam Forback, Samuel Forback, but I think that's what maybe his grandmother called him when he got in trouble.
But to do what I just said, to adopt the resolution, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just say they're both great applicants, and Ms. Donahay made the point that I think there are several seats that are coming open, I believe, June 30, 2021. I've talked to one citizen over the weekend, and at least from where I sit, I've known the Aldrich family for years, I believe she was the first applicant for the open seat, and so, again, I think they both, we would all be served well if they both come onto the authority, but just, I believe in terms of order of application, Ms. Aldrich's application was in some time ago, and I'm inclined to support her, for whatever that's worth. And then, come June 30, hopefully we can get Mr. Forback on, and hopefully he understands that this is by no means suggesting he's not qualified and wanted, I mean, he's got a lot to contribute, but I think the fundraising hook is an important one, and Ms. Aldrich and her ties to the Krebsner Fund certainly will not hurt the park.
I thought that the RCRSA had largely turned over its fundraising to the Friends of the Park. I thought that was the impetus for the formation of that organization.
That may be, but to have somebody on the authority itself who has the ability to go out there and find other creative ways to...
No, I would not have a business.
I think we're in very dire danger of having a FOIA violation if we don't have one already.
So, yeah, I mean, Ms. Smith, you're right, I mean, they have the foundation sort of operating concurrently with the Park Authority, but I think she's a good applicant at the right time. I would love to see increased self-sustaining approach to doing business from the Park Authority, and obviously, we put a lot of money toward the park this year for different reasons, but, you know, I think she's coming at the right time, and their revenue stream related to the fodder sack ten K has dried up, and they've had a lot of eggs in one basket, so a creative mind who can think about other ways to pull revenue into the park to keep going, what they've been doing is smart. I prioritize and put a fundraising person there first, and hopefully Mr. Forback won't be offended, and he'll be able to fill a seat in June.
Well, I mean, we keep saying that, but I don't know what the makeup of the board is, I kind of forgot, if Mr. Curry could maybe give us an idea of what that is.
You mean by...
By the district, I know we have, Ms. Welch is from Stonewall, and then I think Mr. Yow is Piedmont, and I'm kind of...
Ms. McCool is Hampton District, Mr. Van Acker is Stonewall Hawthorne, Mr. Del Grosso is Hampton District, Hutchinson, and then...
Not sure where you went.
I think we had one from Jackson, but I'm not even sure we still have that.
And Ms. Aldrich and Mr. Forback is Wakefield, yeah, they're both Wakefield, so...
And I did speak to Chairman Del Grosso, and he is definitely interested in having more members on the authority, but I asked Mr. Curry, and he said that was not in the...
Not with the ordinance amendment.
Ordinance, so, can't have both, let's leave them.
We may not actually have an opening for, we're trying to have some sort of balance between district, we may not have an opening for somebody in Wakefield in June. So, I mean, I don't want to put that out there, if that's not going to happen.
So, in order to appoint both of these, we would have to, the bylaws would have to be changed for the Park Authority?
The ordinance. And we would have to review the ordinance, we'd have to review the Code of Virginia to ensure that it would allow more than nine, eight plus a board member.
Uh huh, because it would be nice to put them both on.
Absolutely.
Both qualified.
I just have to say, you know, from my perspective, and I know you've served on the Park Authority as well, Mr. Parrish, it's just changed somewhat since our time on there with augmenting of that authority, with the fundraising piece, I just think in terms of appointments, it would make more sense at this point to put Mr. Forback on the actual authority, and to ask Ms. Aldrich to join the Friends of the Authority, or the Friends of the Park until such time as we can put her on that as well.
She applied to be on the authority.
So did Mr. Forback, so, yeah, I don't know, I just, if they were limited to a certain number, like five from the general population, then I don't see how we're going to be able to have two Wakefield appointments between now and June, I mean, to be fair to the other districts.
I think with two Wakefield members of the authorities, as of June 30, you have fairly decent geographic balance, I mean, as just described, you have a couple Hampton people, a couple Piedmont people. Robert, sorry, I missed one, sorry, you're working so hard, you seem like two.
I don't recall which district Mr. Hutchinson lives in. I'm so sorry? Okay, so he does live in Jackson.
We have one from Jackson District?
Yeah.
Who is that?
Bruce Hutchinson.
Bruce Hutchinson.
And then Bonnie Beers is the other one, I'm not sure where she lives. Anyway, I don't know where she lives, so...
There's two or three that are coming up in June, aren't there?
Well, there are two or three terms, Ruth Welch.
Five? I think we got them all.
Yeah. Anyway, I think they're both great. We're fortunate.
I think we are very incredibly fortunate to have two such wonderful applicants, I wish we had two openings at this time. There's a great way forward with the motion and second from Mr. Forback. Is there any other further discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the question, Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Donahay?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
I'm staying.
I vote aye also.
As a board, we really shouldn't be at odds with things like this.
I don't think we're at odds, I believe Ms. Aldrich applied first, and...
I don't know that, we saw them at the same time, I thought.
I'm not at odds with you on this, I think they're both great, and we're talking about six months and a few meetings in between, so...
I don't see a date on Ms. Aldrich's application, I don't mean to be difficult, but there's a date, submittal signature on Mr. Forback's application.
Yeah, she expressed an interest quite a long time ago, is my point, so... He's a relatively late applicant, so I just think, out of respect for her early expression of interest and fundraising prowess, we just go that route initially and try to get Mr. Forback in if he's still willing to do it.
Well, but we didn't receive the resignation until October 14, so how early was her submission relative to November 1?
The question is, Ms. Ritter was appointed in the BZA, and at that time, to ensure she did not sit on two public bodies, made it clear that she had to cycle off of the Recreational Facilities Authority, and at that time, given all the work going on in the high level of activities, people were looking for a possible replacement for her, and she was serving as secretary, which is a job nobody really seems to line up to do. So, Ms. Ritter did the right thing, which was let everyone know that she could not continue to serve, so encourage people to go find applicants. I believe there was one other possible applicant out there who ultimately didn't apply, and then Ms. Aldrich came along, so I don't know the timeline, but, anyway, that's all I can tell you.
I think we're in very grave danger of having a FOIA violation.
She is not a rec authority.
Okay, if she's off, then that's fine. Ms. Ritter, please, by all means.
Jennifer Aldrich, she would be chair of one of the September meetings to see if she would want to be on the board back to that, I expect. And then she comes back to dinner.
And we received your email on October 15.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Ms. Aldrich to the Recreational Facilities Authority.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Can I get clarification, as we discussed earlier, that your motion is to adopt the resolution with...
Sorry, my motion to adopt the resolution, appointing Ms. Aldrich to the Rappahannock County Recreational Facilities Authority to fill the vacancy as listed in the roster of members of the Authority Board.
And I'll second that one as well.
Is there any further discussion?
Other question.
Mr. Fraser?
Aye.
Ms. Donahay?
Aye.
Mr. Woodson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
No, I vote nay. That takes us to old business developments regarding augmenting volunteer responders. Mr. Curry, if you would cue that up, of course, please.
This is a carryover item, was news to me a few weeks ago when I learned that the members of the chiefs were developing additional guidance or recommendations for the, to the county, and just, I believe Friday, received an email from former chief speaker, copied, I think either copied to me or copied to you as the chair, with some recommendations from the chiefs. Unfortunately, I haven't been able to dig into that very much. I did pass it off to Ms. Donahay, as I knew that there was a planned fire leave board coming up, and they've been working on it, and unfortunately, I'm not prepared to provide any greater detail than that on what the chiefs have been doing, but their recommendation, I would say, is independent, because I didn't know it was being worked on.
So it sounds like, to me, when I think we're very challenged to find a way forward, until we have a recommendation from the association and the chiefs, would you say that's correct, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I assume that the recommendation from those chiefs is of the chiefs to the association, who will vet and adopt and pass it formally onto the board, but I'm not confident that that's their intent.
And at this point, only one company has reached an agreement as to what their preferred route forward is, that's correct?
I don't know if I can...
Or how to vote as to what their preferred route forward is.
We know Chester Gap is taking certain action now, but I don't know that they would be averse to some other path forward if there were a unified path forward presented. I don't know. I know Company Seven is trying to explore all opportunities because they're, I think proper word would be tired, and the Company Three is essentially, I think, conveyed that they are in a pretty good place right now, fortunately. But beyond that, I don't really know the will of the company. Hopefully, this action by the chairs will bring them together at the association level and provide some... and provide some definitive recommendation to the board.
And they did cancel their meeting this past month because of the prohibition for meetings in excess of 25 people, is that correct?
Well, I was in a meeting with one of the chiefs, and there was a discussion about that. I don't know that it was canceled due to 25-person rule, but I don't, I know they canceled it out of caution, knowing that the only action item that they had was related to the nomination of officers for appointment at the next meeting, and I think they decided just to put the nominations and the election of officers together. No need to bring people together if there wasn't a time-sensitive action item.
I don't know how the other members of the board feel about this, but I feel we had a vote several months ago from our chiefs, I think we were all there, with the exception of Mr. Parrish, that they needed help, and if I remember correctly, it was unanimous. I think in terms of what that help looks like, or what they need it to look like, we don't have any clear guidance. I don't want it to be solved in a one-off situation in a continuing way as Chester Gap was behind the scenes. I think this business needs to be done in public, and I just feel like we need to, again, engage communication with the association and the chiefs and remind them that as a board, we are poised and willing to act and fund what is needed, but we need guidance from them as to what is needed.
Correct.
And I think it's, I think it's languished long enough that we need to send a letter.
Correct.
Mr. Curry, this issue, this agenda item is specific to fire levy funds and EMS and the research that Mr. Goff did to make sure that we could use fire levy funds for paid providers?
Well, it was, it's a, the opinions that are attached were attached last month as well, and it's a carryover item from last month, and the general discussion of augmenting volunteer responders, that I think Supervisor Smith requested at some point in time, and it, as she's noted, there is not consensus on how to resolve the issue. The board has come forward with funding, it's just not clear how to best invest that funding.
I did originally ask Gary to add this item because we have a situation where we have been asked to do something. That was, you know, the result of the vote of the chiefs, you know, that they need help. And so I asked Mr. Curry to include it on the agenda beginning last month, when there were a succession of meetings immediately before our regular scheduled meeting, or immediately before the meeting, that there could have been action coming out of those meetings where it would have been prudent for us to take immediate action in our meeting. So, time continues to pass, we don't have clear guidance as to what we need to do. I do think as time continues to pass, and given the numbers that we are seeing, and the attrition on our volunteers, that to me is the key piece, they are definitely wearing thin, or they are, as Mr. Curry put it, getting tired, and we need to do for them. They've asked us to do for them. If we just do something willy-nilly, I think we run a very real risk of doing more harm than good. So, I do think it is time for us to send a letter and ask for guidance, indicate that we are poised and willing and have the funds available in our budget to help them, and that we need their guidance.
So, can we just do that by consensus, everybody agree with that?
Does everybody agree that it's time to send that letter?
Yes.
Certainly.
So, and it's to whom?
It would be, I think we need to send it to both the association and the chiefs.
That's fine.
Do you concur, Mr. Curry, that that's a reasonable way forward?
Yes, I mean, the chiefs is technically a subcommittee of the association, but no reason not to go straight to the chiefs as well. You may as well send it to the executive committee, the board, the company boards, presidents, they're as much involved in this as the chiefs are.
Okay.
Good point.
I just know, I feel like at this time, as much communication as we can put out there of our willingness and readiness to engage to resolve this is required. So, if we have consensus on that, I appreciate that very much.
Chair Smith, prepare that letter and send it while I prepare the letter for the chairs.
If you could prepare it, and I'll sign it, I'll review it and sign it, maybe we could circulate it for consensus and then send it. Is that agreeable to everyone?
That's a great idea.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to item I-1, consider a draft ordinance amendment, chapter 22, fire companies and rescue squads. And Mr. Curry, if you'd be so kind, please.
And this was an offshoot from the last month's discussion regarding the augmenting volunteer responders and discussions that occurred relative to current language in chapter 22 of your county ordinance. That county ordinance was adopted quite some time ago, and there have been some Code of Virginia changes since then. Mr. Goff and I met, and he reviewed the state code extensively in our local ordinance. There are actually some recommendations brought forward in 2016 to change chapter 22, but I think that was coming out of a time and through a time where there was some transition, and it didn't get done. So, Mr. Goff and I reviewed Code of Virginia and have put forward some recommended language that's enabling language for the board to ensure that you can take all opportunities available to you by the Code of Virginia, and then put forward a process to do that. So, it would allow you to use levy tax dollars to fund your fire and rescue operations, EMS operations, as well as EMS personnel, if and only if authorized by resolution of the board. So, you would then, by resolution going forward in the future, identify which personnel and through what mechanisms and requirements would be authorized for reimbursement from the levy funds. Now, this would not necessarily impact non-levy fund revenue, and there was some discussion at last month's meeting about whether you should continue to collect tax dollars through levy or just bring it all through the general fund. This is an enabling language to provide you the full opportunities provided by the Code of Virginia.
Is there any specific action you're looking for us, from us today?
If the board would like to move forward with modifying chapter 22, which I believe, I can say I recommend, and I believe Mr. Goff does.
Yes.
It would, staff is requesting authorization to advertise a public hearing so we can see what the public thinks about it. And then following that public hearing, the board would have an opportunity to actually amend the ordinance. There is an advertisement, a notice, public hearing notice attached to this agenda item as well, and if the board would like to move this forward, you can authorize me to advertise that notice to have a public hearing on January 4th, or some other date.
Are there any thoughts, motion, discussion from the board on this agenda item?
I would put forward this, this advertising and accompanying resolution form of a vote that we do go ahead and advertise for a public hearing for January.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Parrish can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish and Ms. Donahue. Is there any further discussion? This does seem very cut and dried, and thank you, Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff for both working on this.
Apologize for a long-winded explanation if this couldn't.
No, it saved, it saved a lot of questions, and I do appreciate it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda, North Pose Road, Jordan River Bridge replacement, Mr. Curry?
I've received over the, now almost three years I've been here, from time to time, requests from VDOT to, for the county to provide concurrence on a design of a facility that may be, doesn't completely align with their standards, and there have been a few bridges that have been replaced, and one being done now, I think Kaiser Run Road. And historically, it's been about whether or not pedestrian, the bridge should be wider to accommodate pedestrian facilities, and it seemed very cut and dried, to use a term we just used, that on some of these very rural bridges, there was no need to make it even wider for pedestrian facilities, because the chances of two vehicles passing opposite directions on the bridge, same time as pedestrian, is very, very, very low. And we probably don't want to have wider bridges than necessary in those areas. This, this request came in recently, but it was a little bit more extensive than those, and I didn't feel that it was appropriate for me to make this sort of decision without bringing it to the board, and so I have brought it to the board. The information provided is pretty detailed, and there's a pre-scoping narrative, and the three questions I've laid out from that, that the VDOT would like the board to answer, is whether you agree with the proposed scope of work, which is to remove an old bridge and replace it with a new bridge, which is very similar in design, but obviously new, very slightly wider, but of course would be constructed so that all vehicles could pass over, not all vehicles, but typical vehicles. So, the width is less than would be normally prescribed by the ASHTO manual, which would require a two-lane traffic-wide bridge, and VDOT is asking for your concurrence that a narrow bridge, a one-lane wide bridge is acceptable in this location. And I know that the residents in that area are very protective of their rural road, but I would suggest, and I'm not advocating for a two-lane bridge, bridges don't get replaced very often, and so this is a once-in-a-50-year-or-more, if you look at the discussion earlier about how old the existing bridge is, decision, and so that's why it is important for the board to consider it and find acceptable to have a single-lane-width bridge in that location. And then, lastly, just to make sure the board is aware of the proposed road closure and the fact that there will be a pretty likely detour for some folks, and there's really not any way to avoid that in a situation like this.
Could I ask a question? Is the proposed bridge the same width?
It is slightly wider from, like, the engineering drawings that are attached, very slightly.
I've been contacted over the years by a couple of different farmers that cut hay, and Mr. Parrish would have to be the one to answer this question on the board, I think, but how, why do you need that bridge to get your mower over it?
Or combine, or something like that.
Well, the new ones sold up behind, but the older ones stick out a little more, and so that would be 10, 16, 18 feet.
How far?
18, 18 feet, I would say.
Oh, then we can't help them, but they complained to me that they've got to ride all the way up around Flint Hill and then back down.
It's talking about going from 11.2 to 12.3 and 3/4, I think.
Yeah, we might could go a little bit, but we can't go 18 foot.
No.
You can't bring an 18-foot in on a truck, so it becomes a building please. I hope, man, I'm making any hay over there. I'm sorry.
As you heard during public comment, there, there is some in, in the public who revere the old bridge and would like to save it. I do not know if it's capable of being saved. Obviously, it's been posted and up for weight, and I don't know if school buses can go across, but, you know, heavy fire trucks probably cannot.
I've seen a lot, I've seen the VDOT putting, putting a trailer grow over it, school buses definitely go over it, I think.
The fire trucks cannot.
Yeah, they're the only ones that.
And that's, that would only get worse in time, of course, so.
It looks like Mr. Nesbit's on the.
He is, I don't know if he's prepared to talk. This isn't, you know, completely his wheelhouse, but we can see if he would like to provide input if he goes to the board.
I just know that PEC is definitely interested in making sure that even if it's not historical, it can be surveyed and documented clearly before any actions occur. I did receive a long email today. Okay, and so I just want to make sure that if we're talking safety, which it does appear we are, that we aren't going to delay something that could be potentially dangerous, and if we do wait until the survey's done, does that put us, you know, five years behind again, and then the safety really does become another concern?
I've unmuted Mr. Nesbit, and hopefully he heard those questions and can provide some input.
Welcome, Mr. Nesbit, thank you for joining us.
Yes, thank you, always a pleasure.
I was, I'm not sure if you, did you hear Ms. Donahue's questions?
No, if she could repeat, it's kind of muted, but if she could repeat it, that would be much appreciated.
And I'll try to speak up. The residents on North Pose obviously don't want anything to do with paving, and I've heard that loud and clear, so I want to put that on the record, so in six, six years we're not doing paving on North Pose Road. But this bridge, they're just trying to understand, I did clear up with Company Four, Flint Hill Fire Department, that the fire trucks are too heavy for the current bridge. You're not changing the width much if we, if we give you the okay to do that, but then PEC wrote today and reached out with regards to the potential that the information about a 1935 bridge isn't accurate, and that it's actually earlier than that, and they would like to make sure we check into it, or somebody does the background study like what was done for Waterloo Bridge, just to make sure before any work is done to that bridge, to the Jordan River Bridge, and I'm just trying to make sure that citizen safety is not going to be in jeopardy as well as, excuse me, getting behind another bridge or another project the VDOT has, to the point that this could be years, put off for years if we don't do it now.
Yeah, I, right behind you, I don't have any relevant detailed information on the age of the bridge. We certainly, you know, we do know that it's not only, or not eligible for the National Register, you know, I've been told by our, this is our local resource officer, but if that's a concern or request in the county, we're certainly providing a, as far as the age of the bridge, no problem with that. The reason, you know, we're putting it back in a similar width, it's a little bit wider, is because it's, it's within a thirty-foot protective easement, and in the, in the common rural nature of the area, typically, you know, we do get, you know, severe foot backs, or why we, you know, why we're using more of the heat, so it's, it's a pretty thing that this does, it helps us stay within the easement, and the abutments, though we're seeing some minor improvements to, to the abutments to hold the, as in, you know, to be ready on only abutments, but basically, we're maintaining the existing abutments, we're not doing any work, and we're doing work in the water, there's, it's requiring water quality for this. Pretty much, we have a ton of those out of the environmental space, but we're pretty close to it, and it's pretty environmentally free from issues, so right now, you know, we're in pretty good shape with the needs scheduled that we've got out there, I think that's in the narrative for this coming year. But if we have to go outside the vital way or existing easement, then that requires, you know, a lot more, literally, area designs, it requires more, maybe it requires a public hearing, and it may require, it may increase the cost of the property. These major, this big, done the state forces, it's, you know, it's a very effective, cost-effective way that we have for, for these types of speeding free, it's all around our district, and we take first mention for it and replacement for it, and we're, pretty much leaders in the state is getting, you know, a, 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 But if there are anything that the county would like us to, more nationally, would like us to do, we'll certainly do that.
I would like to make sure PEC is comfortable with the information as well as the neighbors. When would you begin work? I didn't see that.
See, now, I'll second it.
August 4th and October 20th, 2021.
It should be in the pre-scoping narrative.
So we have, we have a considerable amount of time.
We can help if we're not over next year.
All right. I think if we could make sure VDOT and PEC are in agreement and have it documented, if it is a bridge of interest to them, they were talking about a survey, I think everybody would be comfortable, it's my opinion anyway, that based on the feedback that I've received, that those are the only concerns I'm hearing at this point, making sure we're not paving the road, which we're not, and making sure that the bridge is close to similar in color if we can, that's the only other question.
When you say P, VDOT and PEC in agreement, you mean on the age of the bridge and its eligibility for register?
Yes.
I think PEC wants to check with the Department of Historical Resources, and they may have missed the bridge, that's been, that they missed data.
There is concern that the date is earlier than 1935.
How will that impact the project?
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, how, researching the, doing more in-depth research of the, of the date, if that, if the later project, certainly, painting the bridge, which can be done, it just adds cost to the, to the project. You know, the bridge is, you know, but, but, the galvanized finish is certainly a long-term, you know, a, a finish that will last and be durable, and painting the bridge can be done, but it will, just, just add cost to the bridge, to the project.
I did just want to mention, Mr. Curry just informed me that the representative from PEC, I think Julie Boldhouse that joined us earlier, has her hand up and wishes to be identified. And I would, if she were here in person, ordinarily, I would identify her. So I, I would like to unmute her mic and hear from her as well. Please bear with us, Mr. Nesbit.
Yes, I would, just whatever the county wants us to investigate further, or, or discuss, or evaluate, please provide that in writing, and I appreciate that.
Sure. Well, we're going to talk to Julie from PEC for a few moments, so please bear with us. Yes, Ms. Boldhouse.
Hi. I was just hoping that basically we could get a hair report for this bridge, if that's possible, if that adds significant cost, if there's any other way to ensure that we have full documentation of the original structure before it's replaced and put in place. The reason I say that is because I feel like there's a lot of missing information on this bridge. Like I said, it looks like it dates back to 1909, it looks like it was built by the Camry Company, and none of, none of that information is available in the Department of Historic Resources database that's available to the public, and it's not available on VDOT's information. So I just want to make sure that this bridge is fully documented before it's gone.
And what kind of report did you call that, ma'am?
Ms. Boldhouse, could you repeat the name of the report that you're requesting?
Oh, a hair report, that I'm sure Mark Nesbit knows what I'm talking about.
Yes, we don't.
For, basically, architectural and engineering report on the bridge.
I guess, Mr. Nesbit, maybe you misunderstood my question a minute ago, maybe I wasn't, I didn't fully articulate it, but what will the impact of a report like that have on a replacement of the bridge? If we have to replace it, we have to replace it. So I, I guess what I don't understand is why PEC is so concerned about having this report before the bridge is replaced if it adds cost to the project. Is it going to prohibit the bridge from being replaced?
That's a question I really can't answer. We'll have to, I'll have to, you know, refer back to our Environmental Corporate Resource folks to, to answer that question. As far as, you know, doing that type of report, if it did not show up on the District Register, so that, that didn't, didn't look forward in that arena, you know, I could do this all the time, and, you know, it doesn't, I'd be very surprised, but certainly, the county asked us to do that, we'll do it, and, and certainly, we'll look at things later and, and make calls upfront, but I can't really say right now whether it's good or not.
Yeah, I can remember what happened when the bridge at Taps Ford was put off and put off and put off for replacement until it actually closed the road. And it only impacted the travel of people from Rappahannock going that direction to get on Crest Hill Road to and from work and other places. But it really impacted the people in Falkir County, which the people on North Pose Road would basically be those people that are impacted, that can't have an ambulance come get them for a long time. So I, I don't, I certainly understand PEC's wanting to document something, but I don't know why they can't document it while it's sitting on the side of the, the road, being ready to shift off while the new one's coming in.
I don't know much about the Waterloo Bridge, but I think it's being compared.
The Waterloo Bridge was another thing. It was shut down because it was, it was rotten. I mean, when you start looking at the photographs, I wouldn't want to go across it with a bicycle.
Mr. Curry, it looks like historic American engineering record hair.
Okay.
So what in particular action do we need to take on this item today?
Well, VDOT has asked us those three questions that we provide concurrence with the scope of the proposed work, that the clear road width of the bridge be less than the minimum of provided by ASHTO, and that we understand the closure duration requirements.
This is in...
If the board's okay with the project as identified in the pre-scoping narrative, I would like some indication of that, so we can provide that concurrence to VDOT. If, if for the board to come to a position that you're in concurrence with that, you need additional information, then Mr. Nesbit has asked us to request that in writing.
And this, this is in Wakefield District, I would assume?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So how are we feeling about this?
Well, if we can wait a month to at least give time for this hair report for PEC, and it doesn't detriment us in the way of a start in August 4th, I think we should table it until next month.
Would that be a motion to request VDOT to provide a hair report for the bridge?
Well, the, I have to interrupt, but they're not going to start working on the bridge for another year.
Right.
So that would give plenty of time to determine any kind of historical value the whole year.
Yep.
So I don't see any harm going ahead.
Yep. I just don't want to get out of VDOT's, VDOT's project list. I don't want to cause problems there.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of time to research it, even if we go ahead and give them the go-ahead tonight.
That's true.
So I would recommend we do that.
Should we go ahead and synonymous, yeah, simultaneously suggest they move the project forward, keep it on track with the timeline that's in place, and also request the hair report that has been requested by PEC?
Exactly.
And do both of those things simultaneously? Are you, are you comfortable with doing that all in one motion?
I am.
Okay. So I believe we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
And that is Ms. Donahue's motion or yours?
Well, I, I...
She had it.
But I, I was just helping.
Yes.
It's Ms. Donahue's motion.
What she said I liked. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Well, it's a lot easier than splitting motions and doing a lot of other things.
Agreed.
So that's Ms. Donahue's motion, and Mr. Parrish has seconded it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you to both Ms. Boldhouse and Mr. Nesbit for joining us.
Yes, thank you.
To help through, through this agenda item.
Yep.
All right. That takes us to consider the sheriff's request to thaw frozen capital funds budgeted for sheriff's vehicles. Mr. Curry?
As board is aware, when you adopted your budget, you froze both operational, some operational funds and some capital funds. Within the capital funds, the, what we've called the hang-go funding was all swept into a holding account and not, not funded to the individual budget lines. One of those budget lines was the line for the sheriff for two vehicles at $35,000 apiece. And she has called me late, middle of last week, asking if the board could take action to thaw the $70,000 for two vehicles, recognizing that she has recently had two vehicles totaled, one in a motor vehicle accident and one in a vehicle-deer collision. So she needs to move forward. Of course, we've received insurance proceeds, but they're not enough to buy cars, and she needs to provide vehicles for her deputies.
Are there any discussions or a motion in regards to this agenda item? If there's not, not one off the top, I would, I would go ahead and say we need to move this through and let the sheriff have her money. Then I would suggest that that's a motion. I can make it more specific if you need Mr. Curry.
I think I understand it.
So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Consider school board fund request to thaw frozen operational funds. Mr. Curry, would you mind starting this discussion?
Somewhat similar to the last item. This item is regarding operational funding, and many sources of operational, or categories of operational funding were also frozen when, at the adoption of the budget due to unknown revenue forecast, revenue realization. Some of that funding was $185,000 originally requested by the school board and set aside. The school board has come forward with a request, and the letter, request letter is attached to board docs. I've also attached a summary of those operational funds that are currently frozen, so the board can understand the full picture of that. Dr. Grimsley's here, and I guess there's no need for me to explain what the school intends to use the funds for, she's certainly capable of doing that.
Dr. Grimsley, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, ma'am, the only thing I think I didn't say in my report, it is in the letter, also operational, this is the people aspect, the funds that you all graciously worked together with us with care for a lot of the things that we needed to open under a successful reopening plan, and this is the human aspect of that that we haven't been able to address yet. And also, we have concerns about extensions of contracts beyond the school year, dealing with some instructional gaps we may identify along the way. We don't have the capacity to do that at this time, so increasing those monies would also allow us to plan to do that as well, get those out.
Mr. Curry, we're, we're just isolating the $185,000. I'm looking at from Ms. Nick, a board expense report, where in the right-hand column, percentage used as of 11/30/2020, where's the, is $185,000 currently parked in GL account, Board of Supervisors?
Board of Supervisors contingency budget line.
Okay.
So, to have the board have control over when they would be dispersed.
Right.
That was the logical place.
But it is in that first line, 1101, is that right?
1101, well, 104, 1101, 8,500.
Okay, all the way to detail. And can you summarize at a relatively high level where we are on, on meals and lodging sales tax revenue through November 30?
That information is in the treasurer's report.
I'm looking.
Pull that. The charts are a little bit misleading. There's a note on the very bottom saying revenue shown in quarter is received for county price, that may be accrued back. So the, the nice big bar on the left in first quarter, that's actually FY '20 money. And it comes in after, it goes with when the sales were made, not necessarily when it was received. So that gets pulled back. The second quarter bar that you see for sales tax revenue, that's two months only, so it's strong. And so two months of FY '20 is nearly the same as what you received in FY '2018, and that has a lot to do with online sales tax. So we expect the sales tax revenue to remain strong. We, we really don't know what's around the corner with, with COVID. You know, maybe we're peaking right now, maybe we're going to look back in a month and wish we were where we are today. We just have no way of knowing. What we do know is, you know, within six or months or so, we should have the effect of vaccines and, and should all be hopefully looking back and being somewhat confident. The meals and lodging tax, similarly, these, this data is, the first quarter is actually FY '20, and you can see the real big hit we took during that quarter was actually the final quarter of FY '20. And we had a very strong second quarter, which is really the first quarter of FY '20. So the next quarter of data will not be due until January 20. So that's why in the narrative, I recommended that for operational funding, particularly if it's a recurrent, for recurring expense, I think it would be prudent to wait and see what happens with this next quarter of meals and lodging taxes.
On the sales tax revenue chart, there's an annotation on, on the bar corresponding to fiscal year 2021 for the second quarter that states October through November 20 only.
So two, two months out of three.
Ah, okay, so...
Because this is quarterly.
Right, yep. So all things being equal, it seems that once you add the third, third month, we should be better off than we were in the first quarter. Should be.
Well, we'll see.
I mean, I think it's logical to deduce that, but until the numbers are in, we won't know for sure.
I think the, that would be, you know, we know October, November were strong months, and December will probably be less strong, and January, less strong, February. So we're, we're going to go into a couple months that aren't typically strong months for meals and lodging tax. So if you see revenue come in during those months that, that are healthy, then I believe you really start to have some confidence that you're going to have, you know, we're going to pull through this and we're going to be okay. There's, there's just a lot of clouds between here and there that I can't confidently say, you know, you're not going to need this money that's kind of tucked away for something else. You, you probably won't, but I just can't bring myself to say you won't.
I can say from a business standpoint, as soon as the cold weather hit, it's, I've talked to many people, it's like the faucet went off. And so many people just want to be in the open air, and when it's 30 degrees outside, they're not really interested in dining or shopping or whatever. So I think the spike that we're seeing right now in the cold weather has slowed down, at least from a restaurant standpoint, it's slowed down tremendously.
Isn't it possible, though, that, I mean, if you, if you look at those two revenue streams, that is sales tax on the one hand, and meals and lodging tax on the other, clearly we're all shopping on the internet from home. Is it possible, and I don't, I'm just trying to do the numbers myself, is it possible that increasing sales tax revenue would more than offset whatever typically, whatever typical downturn we see on the meals and lodging tax revenue front during the deep winter months? Because it's, sales tax revenue's been incredibly robust.
It's twofold. So in the future, everything's possible. But the, what you are receiving, the revenue being received in October and November, we already reduced the forecast, right? And so we forecasted to receive less than last year by 50% in the first quarter. So we've exceeded forecast right now because we, we pulled in more than 50% of the, whatever color that is next to it. So that's good, we're ahead. I just, it's hard to say whether that is going to continue confidently over the next few months, and then through the rest of the year. And, and here we are, within a month time or less, we're going to be talking about 18 months from now, what the revenue's going to be for the same lines, you know, for FY ' '22. So it's very difficult.
I would like to just take a minute, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, Dr. Grimsley, but I have heard about these massage chairs, and are there, in fact, massage chairs? And are there, in fact, massage chairs at the school? And if so, how in the world did they get financed, and what is going on? Please?
I'd be happy to.
I just don't want.
So, okay. So if you recall, in our last appropriation, there was private funds that were donated for staff wellness, which was health and wellness, mental wellness, and those funds are monitored by a teacher advisory committee and commit to be fit. So yes, we do have a couple of massage chairs that were at very discounted rates purchased through those funds that were donated specifically for purposes such as that. But no public dollars, of course, were spent for that, and it was appropriated in that last appropriation for the staff wellness grant. So that's where that came from.
So I just want to be very clear that the revenue stream on the purchase of those items.
Yes.
Was that it came in through commit to be fit. It was not through CARES Act money.
It was not.
It was not through any items that we adopted as a board that you received that money.
That's correct.
It was through commit to be fit money.
It was through the staff wellness grant private funds, yes.
In particular, through commit to be fit.
Yes.
And that was a decision made by the school board?
It was a decision by the committee monitoring the funds, right?
It's not even commit to be fit dollars from PATH Foundation, correct?
It's not commit to be fit dollars. It's in consult with commit to be fit, the team, but it's dollars that were given as a staff wellness grant privately.
So there is a committee that oversaw those or is currently overseeing those dollars?
Yes.
And that is not an offshoot of this body?
No.
Or the school board?
Correct.
Is an independent entity making those decisions with those donated monies?
Right.
It is not taxpayer dollars?
No, it is not.
Okay, thank you.
And as much as possible, too, a purpose of those dollars is to infuse as much back to the community in partnership with us. So for instance, the farmer's market, the vouchers were purchased with those funds to then infuse with our farmers. We have another event that we're hoping to disclose this week, too, that will do very much the same thing for Rappahannock businesses. So that's the purpose of the grant, is to collaborate and give back as much to the community as possible.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your clarification on this. I think we agree as a board in our take on appropriating CARES money and going so all in on the schools with CARES money almost to the complete extent possible is because we are a small county. I don't know if this was everyone's rationale, but this was my rationale. We have families that are hurting. We have a limited number of ways to reach those families through the infrastructure and the personnel that we have built in. And one of the ways that we have to most immediately meet the needs of those families is through our schools. And the schools have done a wonderful job. I don't know that I would agree with all of the purchases that have been made, obviously, but to know that those were funded in a way that is not under our purview is what I was going for there in particular, and that we are being diligent stewards of taxpayer dollars.
Of course.
So the chairs are one thing, but what about the massage therapists?
Don't get any ideas, Chris.
But since we are in air clearing mode here, Mr. Deakins, who's one of my constituents in the Hampton District, also raised this issue of empty school buses. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to cloud this, what should be a focused discussion on frozen funds.
That's okay.
But he brought it up, brought up in the comments.
It's the other side of the coin.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
So what was he observing and what?
I even texted my transportation director just to verify for me this particular case. So as you know, we are operating on half-capacity most days and trying to distance even children on school buses. So you will see diminished population on the school buses. I don't think I have any school buses with less than eight, any run on any particular day. However, if there was a certain part of a run where a couple of kids were absent, then you would very likely see a bus with very few students on it passing by, and it could be on a return trip or delivering meals, in which case, nobody's on it, but a lot of food is. So there are very many scenarios where that may be the case.
Very good. And then just to hit upon that same theme, if you could follow up with Mr. Ellis, who also mentioned about the school sports, if you could follow up with him as well, that would be fantastic.
Yes, so the 25 spectator rule, although schools are exempt during instructional hours, spectator during an event, like a sporting event, does fall under the 25 or less cap. So unfortunately, you know, we have to be pretty restrictive on who can come to the games. We're really prioritizing for our seniors first, of course, parents of seniors, but we understand this is a big part of the lives of our community and our parents, so we're, you know, we understand the reasoning behind that to continue sports. So we have invested in streaming equipment to be able to stream all the events. So people will have access online.
Great. I know that made a big difference, and that was going to be my suggestion. I know that made a big difference to a lot of people in terms of graduation. So if there's an opportunity to livestream events and maybe reach more people than ever before.
Yes.
That would be wonderful.
And we're talking revenue as well, because, you know, the gates can be hit pretty hard with this. So any spectators could buy a season pass for the season they want to view and automatically get that for the entire season online. So it's a way to generate a little revenue for our sports department as well.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Absolutely.
I guess it's time to rein it back in. Any other questions from the board or points for Dr. Grimsley?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Curry. So, Mr. Curry, your recommendation on the unfreezing of funds was to wait until when and why?
Yeah, it's certainly an uncomfortable position to be in, but.
I know, I know.
We know that in, and I wrote this in the narrative, as I noted earlier, your next due date for meals and lodging tax is January 20. And so on your February, whatever, date, 4th, I guess, meeting, January is 4th, you will know what, how you, how we did as a community through a whole half of the fiscal year on meals and lodging tax. And you will also have, you know, seven to eight months of sales tax data. At that time, I think you would be much more confident in the revenue that you already have in the bank, how it's exceeding forecast or not, and you will have a much better understanding of what is happening with vaccines and whether we're about to turn a big corner or something is not gone as we anticipated with vaccines. And so that's just my very cautious, conservative perspective.
Well, I'd love to support the teachers, but I'll go ahead and make a motion that we delay the decision until the February meeting. Do we actually need a motion if we're already in a thawed position?
Probably not.
Okay.
I wonder if there's some middle ground here. I know that the option was brought up earlier to thaw part of the funding and reserve part of the funding until February. I would be inclined to support at least a partial thawing of funding so that we could keep our schools moving along. I really appreciate that extra dedication that teachers have had to put in this year between keeping their in-person instructional course and having to provide online instruction as well, the additional communication demands with parents. I know that it's been a very incredibly difficult year through teachers that I've known for years and my personal experience in how difficult and challenging this year has been for our teachers.
So what's your suggestion?
Well, I mean, is there a way to kind of split the baby and thaw part of it and retain part of it for later?
The big distinctions I drew between the sheriff request and the school request was capital versus operating and one-time versus potentially ongoing. And so if there's, and you as a board don't get into the school board's business of how they're going to spend money, but if it was a one-time use, then the conversation we had with Mr. Roller and the amount of funds that were left unspent last year and all that, there is, without any shadow of a doubt, to me, that there is one-time money that could be provided to the school board for them to use up to this amount that they've asked for. But if it turns into a recurring need and for some reason, something weird is around the corner, then, you know, we may not be able to support it in the future, and that's a problem. You know, so if it's, if there's a one-time need, then my concerns for timing go away.
I guess, you know, it's the 2% raises, they're mandated. We're going to have to come up with that money sooner or later. Am I misunderstanding that somehow?
I don't think it's mandated right now, but.
Unallotted but being looked at, and even stronger probably in the biennium with what they're looking at raising them to the national average. So we're looking at trying to gain some ground pretty quickly. Usually, they will count what we have done in previous years, so.
But may not.
May, yeah. But I will also point out my last reoccurring expense request actually resulted in fewer county contribution dollars in the last round. So we went from, I think it was 9.8 to 8.9 in my last local contribution request. So we are very mindful of the county taxpayer burden there, as we look at these. So my forecast for ADM being stable, and what I know about personnel turnover at this time suggests a similar projection. But again, a lot of unknowns. We don't know what the state is going to do and those things, but we always work to keep that taxpayer county burden very low.
It's certainly been a very transparent process between the county and the schools in developing this information.
Is it so much a mandate raise, or that they're going to provide 25% of a raise if we come up with 75% of it?
It's basically that. In order to get the little extra revenue from the state, for which we have a ridiculous LCI and not all of our positions are SOQ, you're absolutely right. We'll get a small percentage, but some is better than nothing, particularly in a market like the schools has or the sheriff's office has, where there are many positions here and in neighboring communities that are very similar, mobility is very easy for employees. And so it is a challenge to, you know, attract and retain best employees.
Are you, Mr. Curry, are you ascribing the phrase recurring obligation as kind of a worse case fiscal scenario? I mean, what's, why are you characterizing it this way?
An increase in pay, salary.
If the, you can certainly, we will make payroll and everything will be fine in fiscal year '21, I'm pretty sure, if you send $185,000 to the school right now. What we don't know around the corner is whether you can do that every year going forward.
Right.
And probably you can.
Well, it's not.
But each budget year is structured, but that maybe is probably what they're asking for.
Sheriff Smith, oh, sorry.
But in a few more months, I think you'll have much greater confidence of what the new normal is.
I just don't see it as a recurring obligation, is my point.
It depends on what they're used for, and you don't control that.
A salary increase is a reoccurring.
Yeah.
Sheriff Smith, what were you thinking when you said split them?
You know, I was thinking if there's a certain amount that would help the school while we wait for these numbers to materialize. Personally, I think that we are in a very good economic position. Anecdotally, I hear things are very good with meals and lodging, a lot of tourism going on certainly late this summer and fall and early this winter. I know that the sales tech numbers, I expect those to continue to be robust, maybe more than ever with online Christmas shopping this year. So I would certainly expect that number to rise. Tax collection has been brisk. All of our charts from the treasurer are very promising, and I don't know if there's a number that would help now, and we could delay part of it to later. I would ask Dr. Grimsley what she would think would be helpful.
Sure. In the cost chart I gave my board last month, I kind of broke out the differences between raises and bonuses, and our one-time expense bonus would be right around 100, I think 102. So any portion close to that would certainly, certainly help. And I also have staff wellness grant dollars, which I am willing to also put toward it. We have other plans, but the committee has said if we need to offset some of those wellness dollars to help with getting this passed for Christmas, we can work into that, too.
What would be your wellness bonus contribution?
Well, we have, like I said, some other things planned, which we wouldn't have to do, but I would be willing to put 30.
So you would be looking at $60,000 today?
That would be, yeah, that would get us there.
Well, I mean, and I think in the long run, if you're putting those wellness dollars to that, it would decrease the ask, which is always a good thing.
Okay.
So I would think we should send 60,000 today, and realizing that the school board will be offsetting the rest with additional dollars, which, that they have at their disposal. And we will revisit this issue when the additional numbers materialize in 2021. That's my motion. Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. That takes us to the Valley Health Anthem Agreement.
This was setting up to be a concerning topic, is no longer that, and Anthem and Valley Health have come to an agreement, and that is very good news.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming today. Have a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Curry, for that update, and I'm relieved that situation is resolved. That takes us to the item I six, the agenda item details, the proclamation in honor of Phil Irwin Day. Mr. Curry, would you introduce this item, please? Or Mr. Frazier, I know this originated with you, if you would care to discuss it.
I'm sorry.
The proclamation for Phil is the next item on the agenda?
Oh, yeah. I, well, there's a couple of us worked on that, but we have a resolution and a proclamation to declare January 1st, 2021, as Phil Irwin Day. And the board has only used that type of thing once before. I didn't know that we could actually do that until we tried it the first time. So it's unfortunate that we didn't know it earlier as a board, that we could have honored several residents that we've lost in the past. But I think this is a very timely thing. If we don't do it now, then certainly we won't be able to do it for another year. And the reason for doing, you know, New Year's Day is, it's, I think it's a great way to honor somebody that we just recently lost, and we just lost Phil a couple of days ago. So I don't think I should be the one to read it because I stumbled so much.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Whitson, I think, did a fine job of putting together the resolution. Perhaps he could read it.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Whitson, would you be inclined to read this into the record, please?
Would somebody want to move in second and vote and then read, maybe, or?
Sure.
Or do you want to do it ahead of, read it before you do that?
I think maybe Mr. Whitson could read it as a motion.
I presume that you will pass it, but in the event that you didn't pass it, it probably wouldn't be appropriate to read it into the record.
It's a good thing we're thinking about all of these things.
Yeah. And Bill Irwin right now is thinking, man, government does not work. I've been sitting here for five decades, and they still can't figure out how to make a motion. I can go ahead and read it, it's fine, and hopefully I won't get teary.
And hopefully, in the reading of it, that will constitute your motion.
Proclamation by the Board of Supervisors of Rappahannock County, Virginia, Phil Irwin Day. Whereas on December 4th, 2020, Rappahannock County lost Philip Phil Irwin, who was an early, strong, and unwavering voice for the preservation of our county's open space and scenic landscapes. And whereas Phil Irwin moved to Rappahannock County in 1960, where he purchased in 1967 the historic Caledonia Farm. And whereas Phil Irwin established on Caledonia Farm, one of the county's first bedded breakfast, a property which he turned into a showplace for environmentally responsible agricultural practices. And whereas in 1970, Phil Irwin, along with other county leaders, established the Rappahannock League for Environmental Protection, which was formed in part to oppose the effort of Potomac Edison to construct in Rappahannock County a high-voltage electricity transmission corridor. And whereas in 1973, Phil Irwin became the first landowner in Rappahannock County to place his property in a conservation easement. And whereas Phil Irwin, over his five decades of dedication to the preservation of Rappahannock County's natural beauty, succeeded single-handedly in making sure our county, in his words, will remain, quote, "incomparably different," unquote. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors that January 1, 2021, be known as Phil Irwin Day. And with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. I did cut off discussion, and I do apologize. I did cut off discussion, and I do apologize if anyone has anything additional to say. That would be the time. I would just say that I'm glad we could get that done. Board Committee Reports. I don't know about everybody else, but we're running short on time this evening. Is there anything critical to report?
Just the planning commission, perhaps. Quick update, the planning commission has basically completed their work prior to public hearing on the so-called May amendments and the adaptive reuse, and they're headed for a public hearing. But I would like, since everybody's here, if the board could direct Mr. Goff to be at the planning commission's 14 December work session, because we're going to start the discussion on the sign ordinance, and I really think that we need to all start on the same page as a planning commission, so that we wouldn't have a lot of wasted effort.
Mr. Goff, are you available the evening of the 14th for the planning commission meeting? Next Monday?
It's Monday, the week is up.
It's next Monday.
Monday evening. What time?
Should be, although I do have a pretty heavy dockets following morning. How long do you think y'all will be taking up that topic?
Well, I don't know how long the planning commission would be discussing it, but I think if you could just get us all started in the right direction, then you could leave.
Okay.
And it's a 7:00 meeting here at the courthouse, if I remember correctly.
I believe it's 7:00, yes.
So I would say if you could hang in for an hour, an hour and a half to sort of get the planning food set?
That would be plenty of time.
I would think that would be more than adequate.
Nothing else, I'll start a disagreement so that you can sneak out.
Yeah, I'll be there.
I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. I think several of these have not met. Is there anything else that anyone needs to bring forward?
If you don't mind, I know Margaret has been here all day, and I didn't know if you had anything quickly for the board on the broadband committee.
Quickly, yes, I just wanted to
By all means, Margaret, please. Thank you so much for bearing with us. And you can always participate during public comment at the beginning of the meeting, please, now with these updates.
Thank you. I take the tradition, as I remember from John Zelsky's days, he's always was the one to give the committee report at that time, so I just wanted to be sure that we
The long meeting, so.
Well, I have a prepared notes from our last meeting. I did not submit them for posting on board docs, because sometimes members will contact me at the last minute and say, oh, you forgot this or you forgot that. And it's just maybe neater if I give a completed document to be posted on board docs to memorialize what happened last meeting. We met on November 11th. It was a full quorum. We had an interesting discussion by a new individual who's just new in town. His name was Roland Lewin. He has formed a company called Sparaville Virginia Internet, but he doesn't actually live here in Rappahannock County yet. He's moving from Atlanta, Georgia, I believe, and but had a, some ideas from his limited exposure to the county on what could be done to improve existing broadband networks. He's mostly in fiber optics and to expand out where fiber optic is desired but not yet available. We recommended, the committee recommended that he bring this matter up if he's still interested in pursuing it at the broadband authority at such times they would be bringing on those subjects. He's just one of the series of presentations that we've had over time, so just make sure you're aware that he had spoken to the committee. The committee members also discussed what would be potential scope and role of the broadband authority and raised the issue really that the newly-formed authority would benefit from accessing the body of information that the broadband committee has developed since its creation in 2016. It's a lot of time, a lot of a learning curve, and the members have accumulated a number of contacts, background material, current on current, and other internet service providers, state and federal grants, other funding vehicles for developing broadband networks, developing technologies, and so forth. It's just a lot of stuff to learn. So the broadband committee then unanimously agreed to extend the offer to the, and I'm projecting the newly-formed broadband authority, to meet with them early on in their existence after the first of the year to kind of brief the committee, the broadband authority members on what the committee has learned and other information that would be available or questions to be answered. In that same vein, the broadband committee unanimously agreed they wish to continue as a group to support the broadband authority in an advisory capacity or any other capacity that might be beneficial to the broadband authority to assure smooth transition, some recognition that this was a big, big area to get into. So the committee stands ready to provide that support. Also, at this time, there are no more broadband committee meetings scheduled. I'm not quite sure where the Board of Supervisors wants the committee to expend efforts at this time, if at all, assuming that the authority will be stood up later on this evening. So at the board's direction, the committee will just stand by for either dissolution of its activities altogether or some other direction from the Board of Supervisors and what it was to do. And I will make the notes that I've just read from available to be posted on board docs so that it'll go into the archives for the broadband committee.
Thank you very much, Margaret. Do you think you have any questions?
And I will be at the meeting for the, when the broadband authority question comes up. I know there are some issues about whether the broadband authority has, will have taxing authority, so you need to allay people's concerns that, no, it doesn't have taxing authority. You're not going to get another tax bill in the mail.
I just would like to write
I don't think a broadband authority would have tax, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
I just, let's blurt it out loud. I don't think a broadband authority will have taxing authority, but it'll have fee-setting authority.
Yeah, but it could have. If you had drafted the Articles of incorporation a little differently, you could have included that, because the state law allows you to have that authority if you wanted to. But I remember our discussion at the Rules Committee when you said your constituents were very concerned that they not get, you know, another tax
Right, we heard about that again today.
I think this board, in the future, if you wanted to set up a district for this sort of purpose, you could, instead of levy on the district countywide or this sort of thing, and then dedicate the revenue to the authority. Those are decisions that an authority will have to ponder and come up with a plan on how to fund whatever they're going to do.
Yeah, so it's just, that's assuming this goes forward as planned.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Bond. Are there any other, we have several different reports here, and clearly we're running a bit short on time this evening. Are there any other reports that we should in particularly bring our attention to, Mr. Curry?
I would just say that the treasurer's reports do look good at this point in time, and with any luck, over the next couple of months, we'll solidify our position in FY21 and have confidence as we move into budgeting for FY22, which is here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other, unless any other board members want to work through these things, I would move that we could place these at the end of the night's business if we have time.
That sounds reasonable, in case anyone wants to revisit that, or I would submit that we should do the same with matters presented by the board.
I only had one, it was a planning commission request, so.
I think we should move the rest of the information reports and correspondence and matters presented by the board to take up at the end of the evening meeting. Do you need a motion to that effect, Mr. Curry?
Yes, please.
I would make a motion that we make that change to the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now we have two closed item, closed meeting items, Mr. Curry. Since we have two, how should we call for those?
Because you must certify and open immediately after doing the closed meeting, if you, if the bodies have a mind to discuss both subjects, it probably would be best to combine them into one motion with two different purposes and two different subjects, I think. That way you could certify all of it when you come out. Otherwise, you need to come out, open up the door, certify, and closing it.
Okay. That's what I was wondering. So would someone care to make these motions?
I'll make the motion. Are we going to closed session as spelled out in the resolutions?
Was it public stay, or should we do this?
We're not clearing you out, just to be clear. You're very welcome to stay.
We're going to read the thing.
It loops here. It's documented.
Need to read a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that the Rappahannock County Board of Supervisors conducted closed meeting in accordance with 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of, one, discussion is consideration of the performance of specific employees of the public body, 2.23711A1. The matter of the closed meeting shall be performance evaluation of the county attorney, and the second one will be for the evaluation of and performance of certain board appointees. Both under 3711.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do we have a second? Well, I'll second for purposes of discussion and a vote. Are we not going to go into closed session this evening, folks?
I think you're just looking for a second.
I seconded it.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're in discussion now.
So, I mean, I just wanted to check since folks were reluctant to second, that that
You seconded.
Yes, I meant second for purposes of discussion. I mean, that's
I have no issue with
I'm happy not to go in closed session, but that's usually my position, so.
I already, I mean, you cleared my question up at the outset, so.
All right. So we have a motion, a second for the two closed meeting items that are attached. Mr. Frazier?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Whitson?
Aye.
Mr. Parrish?
Aye.
And I also. Thank you, everyone.
I think we're just asleep at the switch on